KPTS welcomes comments from the public on its broadcast of the County Commission hearings. Viewers are invited to write to County Commission Broadcast, KPTS 320 West 21st Street, Wichita, Kansas 67203.
meeting. I'm Kate Flavin, Public Information Officer with Sedgwick County. Commissioners, we have a full agenda this morning with the regular and fire meetings. You'll have a donation to the Sedgwick County Fire District One, a few proclamations, a consideration of industrial revenue bonds, you'll receive an update from Exploration Place, then have a public hearing on the International Mechanical Code. Other items include a resolution related to Chapter Two of the Sedgwick County Code, a discussion of code of conduct for commissioners, a resolution related to merchant service fees. The deputy CFO will then provide a quarterly financial report. There is a grant from KDHE for the Division of Health, a grant for the Healthy Babies Program, a grant from the Sunflower Foundation for the Behavioral Health System, and then finally a review of bid board items. And finally, commissioners, I'd like to remind you that this Friday, November 16th, Sedgwick County Fire District One will have the graduation for their recruit class 1801, and the graduation will be at the Sedgwick County Zoo's Cargill Learning Center at 1:00 in the afternoon. And so with that, Chairman, these brief updates, I'll let you have the meeting.
Thank you, Kate, I appreciate it, and I want to welcome all the folks that are in the audience with us today here live, and those that are joining us on KPTS and online later on. Also, I want to welcome caller Peter John, one of our previous commissioners here. Welcome, and he's going to be speaking during public agenda today, and this is our first meeting since the election, and Lacey Cruz is in the audience, I want to welcome her, and look forward to her serving with us on the commission in the future. With that, I'd like to call a meeting to order for Wednesday, November 14th, 2018. Madam Clerk, next item.
Invitation to be led by Pastor Curtis Baker, Riverwalk Church of Christ. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
If you would bow your head with me. Father, it's good to be in your presence today, and we thank you for all those men and women who have gathered here today to consider the good of our county. And Father, I pray that you would bless them today, and that you would give them wisdom in regard to the decisions that they are going to make. Father, with so many political divisions in our land, we pray that at a local level here, we can show good teamwork and civility together, and work together for the greater good of our county and for the city here. And Father, I pray that you would bless us today, and that your presence would be with us, and that we would be aware of that and be comforted by it. We ask all this today in the name of Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pastor, thank you very much for being here today, we sincerely appreciate it. Next item, please.
Roll call, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Randzow.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Unruh.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present. Next item, please.
Public Agenda.
We have one individual signed up to speak on the public agenda, Mr. Caller Peter John. Welcome back.
Thank you, Chairman Dennis. As a Sedgwick County citizen and taxpayer, I've been distressed to see news reports about the scandals FBI and other legal investigations that involve this county commission. The details of this appalling topic shall remain for another day. Today, I am here to praise four county employees who deserve public commendation. May 12th, 1962, five-star general of the Army, Douglas MacArthur, an Army officer during World War I, World War II, and the Korean War, gave his famous speech to the Army cadets at the West Point Military Academy. MacArthur, then in the twilight of his life, used the hallowed phrase, "Duty, honor, country", the motto of West Point, in speaking of the obligations that exist for Army leaders, past, present, and future. I believe that duty, honor, country should not be limited to only our military leaders. General MacArthur said, "To teach you, teach the cadets, not to seek the path of comfort, but face the stress and spur of difficulty and challenge, to learn to stand up in the storm." MacArthur went on to say, "That the very obsession of public service must be duty, honor, country." General Michael Scholes epitomizes duty, honor, country. I repeatedly saw this demonstrated during the years that I had the privilege of working with him while serving on this commission, as well as more recently, as he continued to demonstrate his personal integrity. While Judge Yost enjoys the same amount of military experience that I possess, and that is none, his distinguished public work, whether it was at the White House over 40 years ago, over a decade of service in both houses of the Kansas Legislature, including serving as a leader in the Kansas Senate, and almost 20 years on the district court bench, personifies duty, honor, country. General Scholes and Judge Yost are distinguished men of achievement who possess the diligence, competence, and most importantly, integrity that I stand to recognize this morning. Last week, this commission voted three to two in another direction. I rise today to thank both commissioners, Jim Howell and Richard Randzow, for voting against the motion to place Judge Yost on leave. I also want to praise Commissioners Howell and Randzow for their efforts to provide transparency in this county, as well as protecting taxpayers while providing efficient public services. Howell and Randzow are pillars of integrity during these county commission scandals. This needs recognition, and I proudly provide as much as this citizen can do. These four men, General Scholes, Judge Yost, Commissioner Howell, Commissioner Randzow, are personifying MacArthur's hallowed words of duty, honor, country. As a former commissioner, I would conclude by recommending that this county commission now proceed to move to receive and file this commendation.
Thank you. Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Randzow.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Proclamations, Item C, proclamation declaring National Public Health Thank You Day.
Thank you. Commissioners, I have a proclamation to read. Whereas annually, on Monday before Thanksgiving, public health organizations around the country take time to recognize public health professionals who work tirelessly to promote wellness, prevent disease, and protect the public from health threats. And whereas this year's theme, "Public Health is Your Health," reminds everyone in the community that public health initiatives keep them safe on a daily basis. And whereas National Public Health Thank You Day provides community members with an excellent opportunity to make small changes that will have big impacts in their health, and recognize public health heroes who make it easier for the healthy choice to be the default choice. Whereas communities can support behavior changes by creating environments that make healthy choices an easy choice through improved access to physical activity, healthy foods, healthcare, and health education. And whereas this year, we recognize public health heroes for the exemplary efforts in making our community a better place to live, learn, earn, play, and pray. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Chairman David T. Dennis, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby recognize November 19th, 2018, as National Public Health Thank You Day in Sedgwick County, and invite Adrian Byrne, Sedgwick County Division of Health Director, and Tim Kaufman, actually, to come forward for the presentation of this award. Welcome, Tim. The proclamation says Adrian, but I knew Tim was coming up.
Chairman, I move we adopt the proclamation.
We have a motion to adopt the proclamation. And we have a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Randzow.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Welcome, Tim.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm here on behalf of Adrian. Adrian's here, but she doesn't have a voice, so I'm going to speak on her behalf. I'm very pleased today to accept this proclamation as we celebrate National Public Health Thank You Day. Each year before Thanksgiving, public health organizations around the country take some time to recognize public health organizations and individuals that work tirelessly to help improve the health of all of our citizenry and all of the members of our community, and help protect us from health challenges every day. From the ordinary to the extraordinary, public health heroes educate our community on healthy behaviors and provide activities and actions that give all of us an opportunity to improve our own personal health. In Sedgwick County, we partner with a number of different organizations. Today, we're going to take a little bit of time to recognize two of those organizations as health heroes, and the first hero that I'd like to recognize is the YMCA. The Greater Wichita YMCA is a place where the community can come together, connect, and play, and discover new things. The Y offers comprehensive healthy living and learning experiences for adults and children, and they've got opportunities from fitness, equipment, to team sports, and free after-school programs for area youth. The Y has three areas of focus: youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility. Our focus today is going to be on healthy living. This year, the Y has expanded their late-night program. Teens in particular face a lot of different temptations and challenges to choose healthy lifestyles: drugs, gang, crimes, there are lots of different things that are tempting the children, the teens in particular, and it's helpful if there's a safe place for them to go. The Greater Wichita YMCA and the Wichita Police Department have created a partnership for a solution to that called their late-night program, and they operate that program 50 nights a year. Late night is offered every Saturday from 8:30 PM to 11:30 PM at the South Y, and in 2018, they expanded that programming to the North Branch as well. So now there's two different locations in the community where teens can go and have a safe, healthy environment to burn off some of that Saturday night energy. Late night is free to all participants, and they don't need a YMCA membership to participate. Students are attracted to the opportunity again because it's a safe, good environment. They get to experience positive things rather than negative things, and it allows our youth to make better choices and healthy choices. Something as simple as having a safe space for kids is really important to the health of our children. I'd like to now recognize the YMCA for their partnership as a healthcare hero, and to accept the plaque is Men McKenzie.
Thank you for this honor, we're extremely grateful for it, and the late-night program, we'd hope to expand it all the way across the city so that we can continue to offer healthy options for teenagers on the Saturday nights. Thank you very much.
The other healthcare hero that we'd like to recognize at this time is Open Streets ICT. On Sunday, September 23rd of 2018, a four-mile stretch of downtown Douglas Avenue was closed, and residents were encouraged to, and they were invited and encouraged to join in a fun, safe opportunity along Douglas Avenue to recognize that streets can be used for more than their cars. We wanted to encourage people to ride their bikes, to walk, to get some exercise, and also be exposed to all of the activities that are available through merchants, local merchants on Douglas Avenue. There were, this was the second annual event, there were 35,000 participants in that event, and again, the goal was to foster an appreciation for our community, and Douglas is now a much more attractive street than it's been, there's a lot of streetscaping that has gone on, and it's a very inviting place for folks to go. We wanted to thank the City of Wichita in particular, the Parks and Recs Department for leading the Open Streets ICT Planning Committee and for helping make this event happen. The city staffed that committee and made sure that they worked with the community partners to get everyone lined up to make sure that we would have a successful event in September. In Kansas, the obesity rate among adults is more than 27%, and less than half of the adults report that they get the appropriate amount of exercise each week. And so it's easy for the Health Department to partner with organizations like Safe Streets ICT to encourage additional activity, and I'd like to thank now, Open Streets ICT, and to accept that recognition is Troy Hauptman, the Director of Parks and Recreation with the City of Wichita.
Well, thank you very much, it's a great honor to receive this award, but I want to mention that it's a community award. It was the whole community that came out and actually made an effort to make this happen, there was over 25 stakeholders that helped us organize this event, and it's going to be a great annual event, in fact, we're talking about doing two or maybe three a year. But this is all about the community, and we want folks to have a great quality of life, and that begins with our recreational activities, whether it's at the YMCA or in our parks. We encourage folks to be active, come out to our parks, come out and recreate, spend time getting to know your neighbors, it's all about the community, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you to the Y and to the city and our community for putting on different events that help our community stay healthy, we appreciate that very much. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item D, proclamation declaring National Adoption Week.
Thank you. Commissioners, I have a proclamation to read. Read, whereas Sedgwick County believes, along with the nation, that foster children deserve safe, permanent, and loving families through adoption if they cannot safely return home. And whereas some children who wait the longest for adoptive families are those who have suffered abuse and/or neglect, and may have medical, emotional, and/or developmental needs. And whereas brothers and sisters who are separated in foster care system yearn to be adopted by the same family. And whereas St. Francis Ministries will be celebrating National Adoption Day on Saturday, November 17th, 2018, to complete the adoption of 28 children by 17 families. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Chairman David T. Dennis, and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners do hereby proclaim November 12th to the 18th, 2018, as National Adoption Week in Sedgwick County, in the hopes that the people of this county will open their homes and adopt Kansas children from the foster care system. Commissioners, you've heard the proclamation moved to approve. Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Randzow.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And we have Sarah Robinson from St. Francis Ministries, that's not Sarah Robinson, I'm sorry.
Well, Sarah's here with me. My name's Justin Thon, I work for St. Francis Ministries, and I'm adoption specialist supervisor there. I get the opportunity to work with around 50 staff, who, anywhere from licensed permanency specialists to family support workers, and adoption specialists as well, who work with families. And so we work with children and families to help prepare those children for the adoption into their forever families, as well as working with the families to help prepare them for taking some of our children who have experienced some abuse, neglect in their biological families. It's an honor and a privilege to work with these families. To this point during the year, we have finalized about 216 adoptions, which includes around 150 families. And that's 150 families who, or 216 children who get to, you know, have permanent parents for the rest of their lives. And I think that that is a huge accomplishment for our staff and for our agency, as well as mostly for the families that we serve. And so we get the opportunity to do that. Now, every year, the Saturday prior to Thanksgiving coming up, which is November 17th, we, for the last six years, we have celebrated the permanency of these families at Exploration Place. And so we thank them for allowing us to do that there. But this year, and I think we probably provided, well, that number goes up throughout the month, and so we probably provided you some numbers, those numbers have increased, and so now we have 34 children that are going to finalize their adoptions with 21 families on Saturday, on this coming Saturday. And so that's a very exciting day for all those families, and so we look forward to that every year. So, but thank you for this proclamation, I think that it's more for the families and the children that we serve than it is for us that St. Francis Ministries enjoys and has a privilege to work with you guys and all the families in this county.
Thank you very much for being here, I know how important adoption is to a lot of the families. One of my nephews adopted, and I'm the godfather, and he was a godsend to my brother's family, so thank you very much for what you do. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to adjourn the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners.
Not adjourn, recess.
Recession, I'm sorry, recess, thank you. Recession, the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, and call to order the Fire District Number One. Madam Clerk, please. Next item for the Fire District.
Roll call, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Randzow.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. And we have Sarah Robinson from St. Francis Ministries, that's not Sarah Robinson, I'm sorry.
Well, Sarah's here with me. My name's Justin Thon, I work for St. Francis Ministries, and I'm adoption specialist supervisor there. I get the opportunity to work with around 50 staff, who, anywhere from licensed permanency specialists to family support workers, and adoption specialists as well, who work with families. And so we work with children and families to help prepare those children for the adoption into their forever families, as well as working with the families to help prepare them for taking some of our children who have experienced some abuse, neglect in their biological families. It's an honor and a privilege to work with these families. To this point during the year, we have finalized about 216 adoptions, which includes around 150 families. And that's 150 families who, or 216 children who get to, you know, have permanent parents for the rest of their lives. And I think that that is a huge accomplishment for our staff and for our agency, as well as mostly for the families that we serve. And so we get the opportunity to do that. Now, every year, the Saturday prior to Thanksgiving coming up, which is November 17th, we, for the last six years, we have celebrated the permanency of these families at Exploration Place. And so we thank them for allowing us to do that there. But this year, and I think we probably provided, well, that number goes up throughout the month, and so we probably provided you some numbers, those numbers have increased, and so now we have 34 children that are going to finalize their adoptions with 21 families on Saturday, on this coming Saturday. And so that's a very exciting day for all those families, and so we look forward to that every year. So, but thank you for this proclamation, I think that it's more for the families and the children that we serve than it is for us that St. Francis Ministries enjoys and has a privilege to work with you guys and all the families in this county.
Thank you very much for being here, I know how important adoption is to a lot of the families. One of my nephews adopted, and I'm the godfather, and he was a godsend to my brother's family, so thank you very much for what you do. Thank you. At this time, I'd like to adjourn the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners.
Not adjourn, recess.
Recession, I'm sorry, recess, thank you. Recession, the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners, and call to order the Fire District Number One. Madam Clerk, please. Next item for the Fire District.
Roll call, Commissioner O'Donnell.
Present.
Commissioner Randzow.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Unruh.
Present.
Chairman Dennis.
Present. Next item, please.
Public Agenda.
Does anyone here wish to speak on the public agenda for the Fire District? Seeing none, next item, please.
Consideration of Minutes, Item A, Fire Meeting Minutes of October 10th, 2018.
Commissioners, you've seen the minutes from October 10th and October 24th, move to approve Items Alpha and Bravo. Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Randzow.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
New Business, Item C, accept the Briggs Memorial Fund donation in the amount of $1,920 for the Sedgwick County Fire District One R&amp;D Fund, as well as accepting previous donations, issuing a letter of appreciation for those donations, and authorizing the acceptance of any future donations to the memorial.
Chief, good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, Larry Tany, Deputy Chief of Sedgwick County Fire District. Earlier in 2018, Station 37 at 4343 North Woodlawn in Bel Air began running multiple alarms to a residence at 8414 East Champion, and over the duration of the next seven months, they ran nine calls to this location for a chronic illness with one of the family members. The family members before he passed had met with the family and wanted to set up a memorial donation to Station 37, and the professionalism they were able to exhibit during these calls in these seven months, dealing not only with the patient, but with the family members. At this point in time, we've received over $2,000, I know that the amount's 1,900, but we received another check just since this hit the board. And what I would like to do is recommend that we approve the acceptance of these donations and future donations, and also have the chairman present a letter of appreciation to the family.
Thank you very much for bringing this to us today, and we want to make sure that we do thank the families that donate to this, it's very worthwhile, and we appreciate it very much. I move that we accept this and any future donations, and authorize me to sign a letter of thanks. Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Randzow.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you. This time, I'd like to adjourn the Fire District Number One meeting, and call the Board of County Commissioners meeting back to order. Madam Clerk, next item.
New Business, Item E, consideration of the issuance by the City of Wichita of its taxable industrial revenue bonds to pay the costs of the acquisition, construction, and equipping of a manufacturing facility to be leased to Air Capital Flight Line LLC and subleased to Spirit Aerosystems Incorporated.
Lauren Brandt.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Brent Shelton with the Division of Finance. The item before you is the consideration of the approval of a letter of intent that the City of Wichita approved yesterday, a letter of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds. They approved this by a 7-0 vote. The bonds would be issued to Air Capital Flight Line LLC in an amount not to exceed $18 million. It would also be accompanied with a 100% tax exemption for a period of five-plus-five years, pending the creation of additional 320 new jobs at an average annual wage of Before I continue with the item, I'd be remiss in not recognizing some folks that we have in the audience, representatives from Spirit. Adam Pogue is with us today, as well as Debbie Gann. Joe Norton is here with Gilmore and Bell, who's been legal counsel on this, and Tim Goodpasture with the City of Wichita's Economic Development Department is here as well to answer any questions that may arise. The proceeds of these bonds would be used to construct a new 144,000-square-foot manufacturing facility on the Spirit Aerosystems campus at 3800 South Oliver. As you can see on the monitor, there is a map of the top portion of the parcel where this new building would be located. You can see it's shown up here as the proposed new building, and this is on a parcel of ground roughly MacArthur and Oliver Street on the east side, and the parcel continues on down further south on Oliver. This parcel, with the exception of Building 56G, which is shown right below the proposed new building, is currently taxable and would remain taxable throughout the portion, throughout the life of the industrial revenue bonds and the tax exemption. The only thing that would be exempt is the building that doesn't exist today, that proposed new building. So currently, this is generating about $27,000 a year in tax revenue to the county and the County Fire District, that would continue under the proposed tax exemption, but the new building would be tax-exempt for that five-plus-five years. Because this parcel is located outside the city limits of Wichita, but within their area of influence, the city has the ability to grant, to issue the industrial revenue bonds and grant the tax exemption. As the county commission, since it's located in the unincorporated part of the county, you have the option to take one of three actions today as a result of the action that One is that you can vote today to approve the issuance of the letter of intent for the industrial revenue bonds and to approve that tax exemption. You can vote today to deny that exemption, or you can take no action, which would basically allow that exemption to proceed. The proposed facility is owned by a partnership that's been created, uh, between Johnny Stevenson and Dave Murphin. It's the Air Capital, uh, Flight Line LLC. This building would be leased to Spirit Aerosystems, and they would be the entity that's creating the 320 new jobs. These jobs are in addition to the thousand new jobs that Spirit committed to earlier this year. So if you remember at that time, we had a base employment in, at Spirit of 10,940 jobs. They made a commitment for the next 20 years, four thousand additional jobs, bringing that baseline to 11,940. This is another 320 jobs over and above that. So their baseline employment at the time of the fifth year of this, uh, exemption would be 12,260 employees, continuing to make them the largest employer in this region. Now, as we do with any economic development incentive package, we look to the Center for Economic Development and Business Research at Wichita State to perform a benefit to cost analysis, to see if this deal makes sense to the county, to the region, as well as just to the, uh, public entities that are providing the incentives. With the 320 job commitment, that analysis indicates a return on investment to the county of 30.2% with a benefit to cost ratio of 1.3 to 1. That benefit to cost ratio at that level is the level that we desire for any economic development incentive that we would enter into. That basically means that for every dollar of public, uh, expenditure, we're going to get back a dollar thirty, uh, in benefits to the county. Now, according, um, some additional things to consider with this are some other benefits outside just to the county as an organization. These are 320 net new jobs with, uh, a direct payroll over the next 10 years of almost $200 million. But before they can go to work in the new building, it has to be built, which means about 170 construction jobs, another 134 spinoff jobs from that, generating another $13 million in payroll over the course of the next year. Once these jobs are in place, we've got a total with the 320 new jobs and the spinoff jobs that accompany those of about 727 thou-, uh, 727 total jobs, and over the next 10 years, that would generate about $400 million in payroll in this region. So because this does meet the terms of our economic incentive policy, we would recommend that you would approve a resolution which approves the issuance of the letter of intent, uh, and the issuance of the industrial revenue bonds, and grant the tax exemption for five plus five years to Air Capital Flight Line LLC. I would stand for any questions.
Thank you, Brent. Do we have any questions from the Commissioners? Commissioner Ranzau.
Couple of questions. Do we have a clawback agreement?
At the end of five years, the city will take a look at the job commitment, the job level, and if these jobs have not been, uh, created, they're not at that job level, the exemption would cease. If the, the Spirit would pull out of the lease, then the exemption would cease. So there, it's a standard, uh...
Well, that's not a clawback. I mean, some of the others, we've had clawback. We have agreements where if they don't meet, meet it, we've clawback. There is none in this case? I've asked for one. I'm not aware that there is one.
Okay. I don't know that there is a specific clawback of the exemption, but the exemption would cease at the end of the five-year period.
Uh, well, we'd have to trust the City of Wichita to do that, which, by the way, isn't giving up any property taxes on this particular deal, right?
It's not located in the city.
Right. All right. Now, we had some questions about, or we had some discussions, um, with staff about the Fire District. Is there going to be a payment in lieu of taxes to the Fire District, which I think is our, what we normally do?
There is not one in this proposal. Historically, Boeing, when they operated at this campus, had firefighting equipment that I understand is still there today, and we had not historically gotten, uh, fire protection agreements in, within the Boeing Industrial District where this property's With the job commitment at the level that it was, it met the threshold without the accompanying fire protection service agreement. So no, there's not one with this.
But it's our policy at this point, this isn't Boeing. I mean, it's our policy now, is it not, that we get payment in lieu of taxes? We have here, we had one here just recently. I can't remember who it was with that we got. I mean, that's our standard, that's our desire, is it not?
We, we have the, the policy states that we have the option to seek one, and we discussed one in, in, um, in this situation, but, um, the incentive package, uh, and the, um, the benefits coming back were rich enough that it wasn't required.
Right. So, well, I have a problem with this. I, I think we should get a payment in lieu of tax. I think it was, um, I can't remember what it was, we've done so many, but, um, I, I think we need to be careful because we're going to set a precedent, or it's, it's been our practice to get a payment in lieu of taxes for the Fire District, which, as we all know, has had some financial issues going forward. We want to maintain that financial status. So going forward, if we do this here, which, um, you know, any other business is going to say, "Well, then why can't we do the same thing?" And I'll also point out that yesterday, um, we talked about our legislative agenda items, and one of the items we have is that we're going to ask the state to pass a law that says anytime that's going to require a payment in lieu of taxes between the Fire District and anyone who receives IRBs within Sedgwick County that receives services, so, uh, within Fire District One. So we're actually going to pass, ask the state to pass a law that would require us to receive a payment in lieu of taxes to the Fire District in a situation exactly as this. Um, and so, if that's our position in our legislative agenda, I, I think we should maintain that now and, and not, not set a precedent for others that, that may want to do it or send a mixed message. Um, and I think that's important. I also think it's important to have a clawback provision, so those concerns will be reflected in my vote today. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Just to clarify, a couple of things. One, uh, if this building is not built, uh, and we don't approve the, the IRBs, how much do we get off of this property?
No change from today. There'd be no additional tax.
But as a result of building this, why, we get 320 new jobs that we didn't have before?
320 new jobs, and in year 11, you'll be looking at about, combined between the county and the County Fire District, $180,000 in new tax revenue.
Okay. And to reiterate one point that you made earlier, is that they do have fire protection out there, uh, which is what we normally see when we're looking at these IRBs. Is that not correct?
Correct. Yes, that's right.
Very good. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Well, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That, that's what I was going to reiterate, um, talking with staff. The, uh, fire protection that Spirit provides themselves is unlike what a normal company would come and also have. So if the argument is the Fire District isn't getting money, um, what other companies? Does Textron have that same type of fire protection, or is it just Spirit the only local company that has that?
I'm not aware of the fire protection, uh, service that Textron might have, but what Spirit has indicated is that they have a baseline onsite fire protection service, response time of a couple of minutes to any of the buildings on their campus. Um, they have a security team that's EMT certified, able to read, uh, triage and coordinate, uh, transport. They've got a, a robust fire protection program, several personnel that were former firefighters, so they seem to be well-equipped to handle an emergency of that nature.
Yeah, that, that is what I understood, so, thank you, Brent.
Thank you. Any other questions for Brent? Seeing none, I see Garrett Plummer and Jeff Fleur and Spirit in the audience. Does anyone, uh, wish to speak from the audience today? Jeff, welcome. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, Mr. Manager, Jeff Fleur, the Great Wichita Partnership, uh, 501 East Douglas Avenue. We appreciate this opportunity to be before you this morning to request your favorable support of this item. Uh, this is an item that actually represents important development in a couple of different ways. One is that, uh, as we have heard from Brent, you know, Spirit was one of one mega, 10 mega projects this last year, uh, with the thousand jobs creation, the incredible investment that they're making to their campus, uh, but also, uh, you know, Spirit has noted that today it's continued to grow. Uh, one of the great partnerships that they have is with WSU Tech. Uh, if you think about the Wichita Promise Program, um, bringing new people into our economy, and that's one of the things that I think is a really important distinction, uh, is that, yes, we want to make sure that we're employing our local community, but we also want to bring new people into this community, and that's one of the ways that a city does see growth, uh, and, uh, new opportunities. So this, today, presents that new opportunity or reinforces that opportunity as we go forward. Certainly, this reinforces BREG, the Blueprint for Regional Economic Growth. Aviation is one of our clusters. It's probably the cluster that we have representation globally. Uh, we just, we were at MBAA earlier this year, but then also at Farmborough, and again, the presence of Spirit, uh, in our community with the 450 suppliers that they also support is extremely important to our economy. The other part of this that I think is really important to note, too, is Mr. Murphin's and Mr. Stevenson's foresight to acquire the Boeing site. Uh, it took leadership and vision and investment on their part to take an asset like that and convert it into a viable economic center, but it's becoming even more so today. Uh, so again, we appreciate the opportunity to speak, our support, uh, and would hope that you would do the same.
Thank you. Any question for Mr. Fleur? Seeing none, thank you very much. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this item today? Seeing no one, I'll bring it back to the bench. I move that, uh, we approve, uh, the City of Wichita and its issuance of industrial revenue bonds to pay for the cost in acquisition, construction, and equipment of manufacturing facility to be leased to the Air Capital Flight Line LLC and subleased to Spirit. It, uh, does provide, uh, 320 new jobs, and, uh, we're going to see 12,260 jobs out of Spirit here in the very near future. Do I have a second? We have a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
No.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Thank you all. Thanks for being here today. Next item, please.
Item F, 2018 Exploration Place update to the Board of County Commissioners.
Jan, welcome.
Good morning. I'm, uh, Jan Luth, President of Exploration Place, and just thrilled to be here this morning to give you an, our annual report, um, passing, being passed out to you right now are some goodies. I try to come with a little something every year from Exploration Place. I'm going to go ahead and get started, is that okay?
Sounds good.
Okay, great. So, um, we have a new tagline we've been using as we try to talk about how we really are serving our community, and it's about momentum in STEM. We're certainly a wonderful place for folks to come and visit and bring their children and bring their out-of-town guests, but we also kind of have a higher calling, and that's really to be a leader for STEM education for our community. So I'm going to try to focus a little more on that today. Some of our metrics from our most recently completed fiscal year are kind of remarkable. We, we can't get over how we're continuing to climb. We served almost 300,000 people this year with a 16% increase. We had 244,000 people coming through our facility, which was a 19% increase over the prior year, and our memberships have grown 15% at 4,500. I can tell you, today, they're closer to 4,700, but this is actually at the close of our fiscal year, so it just keeps growing. Traveling exhibits this past year, we had Hall of Heroes, which was extremely popular. Rescue, Rescue was a great opportunity for us to partner all across the community with everyone that is involved, all the different businesses and organizations that are involved with taking care of people and saving people. So 911 was out there, we had, um, emergency management out there, the city police, Sheriff's Department, lots of different organizations from the city and county were out throughout the run of this exhibit. They had great exposure, and our visitors just loved it. This summer, we had Planet Shark, Predator or Prey, and it was, um, it was amazing. People loved it. Here's what's the lineup for this fiscal year. We've got Toytopia, which is doing really well for us this fall. People are having a good time with it. Opening in January is Top Secret, Licensed to Spy, and then in the summer, Ripley's Believe It or Not, and we're already working with the company that put that exhibit together, and we're finding out all of the Kansas Ripley Believe It or Not, and we'll have a, a small section in the exhibit about those. For our permanent exhibits, of course, the big news last fiscal year was the opening of Design Build Fly. It was really like landmark growth and opportunity for our organization. We had well over 100 donors to this exhibit from our community, um, both individuals and businesses, and it's just really been serving us well, and visitors love it. Um, it's been a wonderful spark for a lot of new educational programs that we hadn't been doing before. But the exhibit plans for this fiscal year, you can never just sit still. So our castle, Where Kids Rule, the last renovation we had to that was in 2011, so it, it's hard to believe it's been so many years, so we're doing a refresh on that. We're in the planning mode right now. That refresh will open in July with a Storm the Castle Weekend. It is now a year since Design Build Fly opened. Uh, just two weeks ago, we brought together our exhibit advisory committee, those different engineers and workers from across the community who advised us on the content, and we have a list of changes and adjustments we're going to make in 2019. We had promised the community, and we promised all of the donors, that we would make annual changes every year to Design Build Fly, so we had raised all the money in the beginning to be able to do that for the next 10 years. We're staying true to our word, and the first round of changes will happen in 2019. We are also in major planning mode right now for our brand-new, uh, permanent exhibit Heads Up Health. It will open in the fall of 2020, which is our 20th year, and the planning is beginning right now for that. A few years ago, we decided it was important to be able to add events to kind of our, our product complement, and we have had a lot of different events going on. Our Maker Fair just completed its, uh, fifth year. It'll be coming up this April. We're moving it from the summer to the school year to be able to have school groups come. Last year, we did a free eclipse party that served about 4,000 people. Spooky Science, we do each October. Gingerbread Village was this past weekend, 4,400 people, a 10% increase over the prior year. Fiesta Hispania, every September, we do a wonderful celebration of the Hispanic culture in our community. Death by Chocolate, which is coming up in February, mark your calendars, February 23rd. You don't want to miss it. And we tried something new this past May that was really cool. It was called River Flicks. For three Friday nights in a row, we showed films directly on the building. It was a free event for the community, and we'll be doing it again this May. New this year is EP21. We started these in August. We're doing them the third Thursday of every month, from 5:30 to 9:00 at night. We have a cash bar, food trucks, a musician, the exhibits are open, special activities, and it's for people 21 and over. So we're trying to appeal to a lot of our young adults that are in the community, many of whom are working downtown, looking for things to do after work, and so we've tried this, it's going really well, and pretty much every single month, we have a sponsor for it as well, which is wonderful. Those education programs keep on growing. This past fiscal year, we had 14 gifts, grants, or contracts to deliver education projects, meaning these were not one and done. Some of these were, you know, 20 or 25 different programs would be perhaps in one contract. Through all of those efforts, as well as just individual fee-based programs, we served 88,000 children in organized educational programs this past year, which is a 27% increase. We had about 15,000 on field trips, which was an 8% increase, and 1,100 summer campers, a 12% increase. We had, we gave up our boardroom for summer camp, we gave up Waterway Hall and divided it up for summer camp, we, uh, closed our creator space for several weeks and had summer camps in there. We're, we're almost running out of room for summer camp, it's growing so much. In January, we did a complete upgrade to the projection system of the digital... In January, we did a complete upgrade to the projection system of the Digital Dome Theater, and now the imagery is absolutely stunning. So if you've not been to any of our films in the Digital Dome Theater, I really encourage you to go. The sound system has always been exemplary, and now the imagery is also fabulous. So here are the films that have been going on for this fiscal year was Fighter Pilot and Great White Shark, and we just recently opened Pandas. There's always work to do on our building, and every year when I come and give the report, I talk to you about some kind of a building project we're doing. And this year, it's kind of been cross-cutting two fiscal years as our Explorer Room project. It's a room behind the dome, kind of an unusual-shaped space, and the construction project is just about finished. And through this, we will now have two additional classrooms, so that'll be very helpful for summer camps, as well as a lot of our other programs. It is also a location where we're going to be able to start to store our crates. Every time we do a traveling exhibit change-out, three months of the year, we do those, and we have crates filling up our Waterway Hall that the public can see, and then we're not able to rent Waterway Hall those three months. So now we have a space behind the scenes to put those crates, and Waterway Hall will be available 12 months of the year. We've also created, there was always a door there. We've now made it a beautiful glass entrance, and so we'll be able to start to have special programs enter right through there. School groups will enter through that space. So we're going to be able to really make good use of this piece of real estate that had, it needed a lot of help to be made to be in keeping with the rest of our building, and it's really looking terrific. We're doing some planning right now for a circle drive on the Entrance Plaza. For whatever reason, back in the late 90s, the decision was made not to have a circle drive to be able to drop people off and then go park your car, but we know from lots of feedback that we've received that this is an important thing for us to do. Whether you're there with a stroller, or you have someone with a walker or a wheelchair, you want to be able to be dropped off and then go park, because the campus is so expansive that even the handicap parking is a great distance from the front doors. So we're working on all of those design plans right now. I think this slide is a tremendous pride to our team. We've been doing great things for Wichita, Sedgwick County, South Central Kansas, and in many respects, all of Kansas. But starting to get recognition for our work outside of just our own community is really important. So this past year, we received the Destination Promotion Award from Visit Wichita, which we were thrilled about. That was for Design Build Fly. About two weeks ago, we received an Innovation Award from the Wichita Business Journal, also for Design Build Fly, and that was very kindly nominated by Spirit Aero Systems, who was our presenting sponsor for that exhibit. And then on Friday, it was my privilege to accept an award on behalf of our staff and board for an Award of Excellence from the Kansas Museums Association, also for the Design Build Fly exhibit and education programs. Through that exhibit, we had had a NASA grant. The NASA grant required us to do extensive evaluation work, and we hired a firm out of Virginia that's nationally recognized in the science center field. They were then writing a book about intentional practice in the museum field, and one of the elements that we included in the evaluation project for Design Build Fly was something new and different that they had never done before. And it was so successful that they asked our staff member who led that effort to write a chapter for the book, and the book came out two weeks ago. So we're really proud of the fact that a lot of our work is now starting to get recognized. It's a wonderful step forward for the organization. We believe we're sparking the next generation for the STEM workforce that everyone's talking about. We're, we're part of the economic development ecosystem here in our community. So I want to say thank you for allowing me to come before you and give an annual report. I want to recognize, where is he, Mr. John Mosley, our past chair. I know many of you know him, and he was kind enough to be here with me today. And I also wanted to say, and I know I say it every year, but it's really true, because we have incredible annual support from Sedgwick County, that is what allows us to do all the things that you're seeing here, because we're not having to worry about how we're going to pay our light bills and how we're going to do some of our basics. And so we're able to put our energy and our fundraising into all of these things to help us move forward and continue to serve our community. So thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Well, I don't really have any questions, but I wanted to say thank you for coming and for giving us an update. I don't see the word decreasing here anywhere.
No, it's amazing.
It's everything, everything's going in the right direction.
Amazing.
So it's really, really is a very impressive report, and the, the community seems to be responding to the things you're doing. So thank you for your good leadership, and I'm glad to have this in our community. I think it's one of those quality-of-life things that people need to grow this community, to grow the community and the, and the economy. So thank you for that. I just want to say, I like, I like the Design Build Fly thing is still my thing. Love that most of all. And I just want to say, I haven't been able to attend the meetings in the last few, couple of months. I've been a little bit busy, but I plan on coming back, so I'm on the board.
Well, good.
Yeah, and I do appreciate having, having the chance to serve on this board. It's a great group of people that have great vision for the community. So unless there's any other, anybody else wants to speak, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We'd receive and file.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Jan, I'd just like to add my congratulations for an excellent report, but excellent contribution to our community. And so thanks, not only to you, but to your Board of Directors and to all your employees who work hard and who are continually cultivating the opportunities that you see. It's, it's a great asset for our community, and I think we're, we're all proud of it, the way that you have kind of elevate, elevated its presence in our community and made it really a destination place.
Thank you.
The one question, though, as you, as you talk about different projects for the building itself, I know this is a silly question, but you're not going to do anything that would impair the iconic appearance of this building that means so much to a lot of us.
I'm so glad you asked that, because actually, we, Sam Frye, who worked with Moshe Softe on the building, local architect with Schaefer Johnson Cox and Frye, is kind of our right-hand with every single thing we do in the building to ensure that we do nothing that alters the aesthetic intent of this building, which is internationally recognized. So we are constantly paying attention to all of that and, and really striving to come up with the best way to, Sam's words are, to codify it, so that it lives on beyond Sam and me, to make sure that all of that aesthetic intent is, is taken to heart in the years to come, too.
Well, I appreciate your comment, and I know that it's design, it's, it's beautiful, iconic, and it does create some operational challenges to you, I know the way it's laid out, but I know that you all are handling that challenge and, and protecting the integrity of the building. So, anyway, great report. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you.
Well, Jan, thank you very much for being here and giving us the report again. It is a great quality-of-life amenity that we have here in Sedgwick County that draws people into this area to see what a great place it is to live, work, and play. So we thank you for that. The other thing is, the work that you're doing in STEM is invaluable to our students, to get them excited about STEM for the future, so that they can start following in our footsteps and fulfilling their dreams. And I don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second. Please call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Randzow?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Next item, please.
Item G, Resolution Amending Article 5 of the Wichita-Sedgwick County Unified Building and Trade Code through the Adoption of the International Mechanical Code 2018 Edition with Local Amendments.
Morning, Chris.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As stated, Chris Labrum, MABCD, and today proposing a new Article 5 for our uniform, or Unified Building and Trade Code, excuse me. And that adoption is the International Mechanical Code. This is a re, a readoption from 15, which was the, done in April of 2017. That was our last adoption of this code. That was done with 40 amendments. This is the 2018 IMC, also with 40 amendments. 20 of those impact the commercial side of the code, and 12 of those residential. So the 12 residential amendments were already looked at as part of the IRC a few months ago. The code, this is incorporated into several codes, of course. We'll see that in the next slide. The majority of our amendments in this case are based on that incorporation and coordination across our UBT C, everything from administrative adjustments to make it more usable, understandable, as well as the numbering to make it fit into our flow there. So those codes include the 2012 Building Code, which is our current adoption. We are also well into the review of the 2018 Building Code and hope to propose that within the coming months. The 2018 Residential Code has already been adopted, so this folds with that. The 2015 and 2018 International Fuel Gas Codes, similar to the IBC. We're still on the 2015 IFGC, excuse me. However, we are close to proposing an adoption of the 2018. Then, this also has been coordinated to fit both our 2015 Uniform and International Plumbing Codes. So those codes, we are just forming the committees with those to begin review. So in that case, their job will be to ensure that it coordinates with the codes you see on the page above them. So this will, of course, cover all of unincorporated Sedgwick County, as well as the City of Wichita, and includes 18 smaller cities that we contract inspections with, as well as some areas in Sumner and Butler County. We have seen great cooperation with our contractors respective to the requirements of this code. That includes both establishing the requirements, as well as following, adhering to those requirements. We've had no safety, no management issues with this code. The amendment, as stated earlier, the amendments are relatively minimal and serve mainly as a cleanup usability. So the Board of Appeals of Air Conditioning, Refrigeration, and Warm Air Heating, normally just referred to as the Mechanical Board, led the review of this code, coordinated that as required and in the areas of overlap with the Wichita Builders Association. There are also numerous HVAC and engineering associations in this field. That was, they were involved, and that was coordinated with them as well. I know, I know I'd miss one if I tried to list them all, but we'd certainly like to thank them for their help and assistance in this. Again, no substantial changes to the current practices that we see in this adoption. Staff, of course, heavily involved, and we see no issues with community or industry support. A few of the amendments that we'll discuss today, they all center around ducting with clothes dryers. So first one is duct installation. This is actually retaining a 2015 amendment to do with exhaust duct sealing. In 2015, the code relaxed, baseline code relaxed requirements and began to allow sheet metal screws, small sheet metal screws, and also did no longer prohibit anything that protrudes into the airway of the ducting. We are not comfortable with that. Staff and industry both agree that that is not something we're willing to open up yet, based on the fire hazard of a dryer catching on anything that may be in that ductwork. So we, our amendment still says no use of sheet metal screws and no fasteners that would extend into the ducting or the airflow area. Next, also with that ducting, dealing with specified length, and this is again retained from our 2015 amendment, the code actually only allows a 35-foot maximum length of ducting. We allow up to 45, but then have a table that reduces that length based on the number of fittings or any elbows, whether a 45 or a 90, that would be in the ducting there. We also allow for manufacturer's installation instructions. There are some cases in which now we have fans and different things that actually power the, the exhaust air out of the ducting, and so in those cases, you may actually be able to extend it even beyond the 45. So our, our amendment does provide a less restrictive and capability for that. This one is more of a matter of awareness, public awareness, as well as for you all. The code still requires a four-inch round opening with 12 and a half square inches of space, of area in that. What we see now is there are a lot of ornamental fixtures designed to go on these, so some areas jurisdictions are amending to allow for a little bit of encroachment into that four inches to accommodate the, again, the ornamental fixtures. Again, and we are also not comfortable doing that yet. So this is not actually an amendment, but just pointing out that we did not amend this. The baseline code stands, and we still require folks to have a four-inch minimum opening, 12.5 minimum square inches in their dryer ducting. And then lastly, the code beginning this year stated that it must be a circle, must be a perfectly round circle for your dryer ducting. We see no issues with allowing an oval ducting to accomplish that circular pattern, and we do that, of course, in a two-by-four wall, so that the ducting is able to fit inside the wall and not be compressed by the sheet rock. And we, of course, prefer the mechanical contractors to make that oval versus it be done in another way. So we are still proposing that we allow the oval shape. So again, we are less restricted from the baseline code in this case. So with that, this is a public hearing, so we recommend that the, that we open a public hearing, take any public comment, and then close the public hearing and adopt the resolution.
Thank you, Chris. First of all, before we open the public hearing, does any of the Commissioners have any questions for Chris? Seeing none. And at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing on Resolution Amending Article 5 of the Wichita-Sedgwick County Unified Building and Trade Code through the Adoption of International Mechanical Code 2018 Edition with Local Amendments. Would anyone like to speak on this issue? Seeing no one, I'd like to close the public hearing on the amendment of Article 5, and I move that we approve the resolution. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to second the motion, but I wanted to see if Lonnie's happy with this or not. Lonnie has an opinion. I want to hear, I want to hear what he has to say.
Lonnie Wright, 1721, South Blue, Wichita. And I do attend the Mechanical Board meetings, and I agree with their proposals. They have good discussions going on. In fact, it's a good board with the staff. I think they're almost done with their 2018 review, and our plumbers haven't even got started. But I do support it.
All right. Well, very good. I wanted to say, I want to say thank you for Director Labrum and his staff, and O'Stoney, and I just lost your name, I'm sorry. But anyway, Courtney, thank you. Visited with us yesterday and did a great job, and they've been very, very available and transparent, and they listen and answer questions. I always have lots of questions, and so thank you for your good work on this. And I know that the board voted unanimously, and I think WAB is on board. So I am, I think this is, this is a great update to our code, and I think this has been very well done. So thank you for your good work, and again, I second the motion.
Thank you. Any other discussion? And again, each one of us have been briefed thoroughly on this item. It's not that we don't have a lot of questions. We've had a lot of questions in the past, but there's not a lot of questions today. Well, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Randzow?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Next item, please.
Item H, Resolution Creating Section 2-30, a section within Chapter 2 of the Sedgwick County Code.
Warren Will.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. William Dear, Assistant County Counselor. The resolution before you is fairly simple. It would create a new section of our county code, requiring a simple majority vote, regardless of how many Commissioners attend a meeting. So we would need three votes to bind the county to any action, if there were three, four, or five Commissioners there. And this was kind of, the question was prompted a few weeks ago when we changed the quorum, and it would appear, under current law and current county code, two Commissioners could pass action. You know, if there were only three Commissioners present for a quorum, there could be a two-to-one vote, which would bind the county. So this is really a purely policy decision. I know it says on the agenda that I, that my recommended action is to approve the resolution. That's not really the case. It's to the will of the board. So...
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. After the, the quorum decision a few weeks ago, a couple of weeks ago, I got to thinking about this, and it wasn't presented at that meeting, but I, I had a question of whether or not two Commissioners could pass something, if three Commissioners could constitute a quorum and they can meet. And of course, under KSA 19206, which was part of that discussion, the chairman can call a meeting, or three Commissioners can call a meeting. That's really what that says. So I think the, the logic there was that three Commissioners can call a meeting, then three Commissioners ought to be able to meet. And so based on that, there was an argument that we would, we should amend our quorum policy, which is what we did a few weeks ago. But we do allow two Commissioners to speak with you. But we do allow two commissioners to speak with each other. And so in the spirit of coma, two commissioners could essentially have a discussion about an item that would come before the commission, and that's legal to do so. We have five members on this board, and so the spirit of coma is that two commissioners should not be able to have a controlling vote and also be able to speak about that privately. We ought to have open and transparent government. So I had some concerns about that. I did speak briefly with the Attorney General. He encouraged me to submit this as a question. I did do that, and actually looking at this, there are some laws on some types of boards where the statutes seem to touch this item, but really not for county commissioners. There's nothing in the law. And I even talked with Counselor Powell. I think she would agree that, based on where we are right at the moment, unless we pass this, that two commissioners could, in that scenario, could actually pass binding policy and conduct business on behalf of the county. And I can even perceive, it would be an extreme case, but I can imagine if three commissioners met, or even five commissioners met, and for some reason, four of us, or the other commissioners, said we had to recuse ourselves. For example, you could actually get down to one commissioner, could actually legally pass something, and it could become a one to zero, and that's the majority of the voting members in that case. And so I think this, although we have not had to exercise that scenario, I think this is just wise to have this in place. I remember a couple of years ago, when Wichita was considering an item, and I watched their meeting, and they had a couple of councilmembers that were missing that day. I think they were doing important work elsewhere. But five councilmembers were there, and they had a motion and a second, and they voted. It was a three-to-two vote, but it failed because they have a policy that requires four to pass, because they have a board of seven. And so that just seems common sense to me, especially in light of the spirit of coma. I would encourage us to add this to our legislative agenda, that I think this ought to be standard policy for any board, that you can't have interactive discussion by a couple of board members and still have, then would have a controlling vote of that board. I think that violates the spirit of coma. So anyway, with that, I would say it was a little bit confusing, which is, there's a couple whereas statements on here. This clarifies it, cleans it up. I think we all agree, once we read this resolution, it's very simple. It makes it very clear that three commissioners, or three affirmative votes of the county commissioners, would be required to pass any item of business. Of course, there's a couple of things where we have to have a supermajority, defined by state law. That would still be in place. This does not supersede that in any way. So with that, I would like to make a motion. We would approve this resolution.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Ranzau?
Yeah, I have a question. Continue on with some of the comments by Commissioner Howell about the resolution that passed on October 24th. Now, we passed the resolution 24th. There's been some confusion. I'd like you to clarify. When did that resolution actually go into effect? Was it right then immediately, or was it a week later after it was published? Will?
I believe it was when it was published, sir, on the 31st.
Okay. So we passed that thinking that we could go into executive session and have three votes, because we would meet the quorum, no longer needed by four, but it actually wasn't in effect until a week later. And my understanding is normally under home rule resolutions like this, we have a statement in there that says it will be effective upon passage and printing in the paper, but that portion of the part about being printed in our official paper, or whatever publication, was removed for some reason. But it doesn't require the requirement as required by state statutes. So that's problematic. I just want to state for the record, again, I was not in that executive session, so if anything was determined or any aggression given that may, since technically that resolution apparently wasn't in effect, there may be some legal issues or concerns there. I did not participate in that, so I have that concern. But nevertheless, I do think it's just good policy to have three votes required. I mean, not very often are you actually going to have just three people here, but you know, it could happen in the example of the city, I think that related to the EMS in Washington, I think is what it was. So otherwise, if they wouldn't have had that requirement of four votes, it would have been a whole mess then. But anyway, so I think it's good practice, and I'm supportive of this, so.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Will, there's been a couple of comments made about interactive communication between two commissioners. This doesn't change that ability for a commissioner to speak with another commissioner in any way.
No, sir. This merely would just require three affirmative votes, regardless of, you know, there could be a situation where you could have five commissioners, four commissioners, or now three commissioners present at a meeting. In any of those scenarios, we would need three eyes to pass something. That's it.
Well, I'm supportive of this concept also. I am, I would like to see the resolution come to us perhaps with a little bit of language change, though. I mean, I'm supportive of the concept. I'd like to vote in favor of it, but for example, one of the things that troubles me in the third whereas, says this change has created confusion and a lack of clarity on how a meeting may be held. We can hold a meeting with three commissioners, so I guess I'm just arguing with a couple of words here, and I hate to, I prefer not to sign a resolution that has a statement that we are confused and unclear on about issues. So I would, I want to support this. I think it is the right thing to do, to have three affirmative votes to transact county business. Don't have any problem with that. But I would like some different language, so that's why I would prefer to defer this, and we can pass it next week, or when our next meeting is.
Other comments? I have a couple of questions. Unfortunately, I wasn't briefed on this until eight o'clock this morning, so it kind of caught me off guard a little bit. I saw it briefly in the draft agenda, but I hadn't been able to ask any questions. And this morning, I asked several questions, and I'll ask them again here. What happens, first of all, with the counties across the state of Kansas that have three commissioners? How do they do business?
You know, Commissioner, a lot of counties have procedural rules that cover these types of situations, and so without doing a lot of research on that, I wouldn't be able to tell you.
Do you know what the rules are for the ones that have three commissioners?
I do not.
Okay. Another question I've got is, how many counties have five commissioners?
I don't know the answer to that.
And I'd like to know that, and I'd also like to know, the counties that have five commissioners, what their rules are. Next question is, how many counties have seven commissioners?
To my knowledge, Johnson is the only county that has seven.
Do you know what their rules are?
I just briefly read their rules earlier and pulled an excerpt out. They have a set of procedural rules where they talk about abstentions, which is what our concern is here, and it says, "If abstaining, the member shall be counted present for the purposes of a quorum, unless the member leaves the meeting, but shall not deem to have participated in a vote in any action of the Board of County Commissioners." Under common law, and we have two Attorney Generals' opinions that both Karen Powell and I have looked at this morning, that state an abstention is the same thing as a affirmative action. You're essentially acquiescing with the yes votes. Johnson County has gone in in their procedural rules and changed that, where an abstention would just be a neutral, it wouldn't be a vote for or against. So that appears the way Johnson County has handled that issue.
Really, the reason I'm asking more about the seven is, you know, we're going to go through redistricting in 2020, and Sedgwick County continues to grow. There are seven city councilmen representing the area. I would like us to explore what it takes to go from five to seven in Sedgwick County during redistricting, and that's going to affect some of the different rules and so forth that we have. So I've got some questions there, so I just want everyone to be aware that this has been in the back of my mind for some time, on whether or not we should move from five to seven commissioners for Sedgwick County to better represent the citizens here. I do have one other question back on the city council, because that was brought up. Is there a statute on city councils?
There is. There's a state law that governs that. We don't have a similar state law for county commissioners.
So the fact that that was brought up really doesn't affect us, because we operate under what our policy is, rather than what a state statute is, correct?
Right. In my opinion, this is a policy issue. There's not a state law that would require the change.
I don't truly have any objections overall. I think I've got too many questions right now, because this just hit me at eight o'clock this morning, to really make a good decision on it this time. But Commissioner Howell, you've got a question.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. With commissions that have three members, their, two commissioners can't talk to each other. So this is really not a problem for those types of counties. We have 105 counties in Kansas. The vast majority of county commission boards are three members, and so this really is an issue for them. It's only four boards that are greater than three, and I believe there's only a handful of those. I'm going to say probably four or five. I'm not sure that number actually is important, but if it's important to you, I'm sure we can find that out. And I appreciate the fact that there's a law that was passed for cities. I'm asking us to do the same thing for boards that are more than three. I think that ought to be a legislative agenda and pass a similar law for counties, so this isn't something that should be done at our level, although since it's not a law right now, there's nothing will prohibit us from doing this today, or having a policy such as this. And second of all, if we have, at some point in the future, have seven commissioners, this obviously can be adjusted and changed as needed at that time. But I would just remind us that the resolution that was passed on the 24th of October, it was published on the 31st of October, was an off-agenda item. We weren't briefed before that meeting, and it was consequential. It was significant. We read it during the meeting. This today was posted in our draft agenda last Thursday, and it was published to the public on last Friday. And I received a briefing on this yesterday from our council that came by and visited with me, and I think I saw that there was appointments for all five commissioners yesterday. And so we've had opportunities to be briefed on this. And to the extent that the third whereas is confusing, I, I'm sorry, has a statement of confusion and lack of clarity, believe me, I wouldn't say that, except for, I talked with many people, and there's a lot of confusion. This cleans it up. I'm the one that requested this language. The reason for this today is to clean up where I believe is confusing. Even when I spoke with the Attorney General, he was like, "Well, that's a pretty good question. I don't really know the answer. That's a good one." He said, "Please submit that in writing, and I'd like to take a look at that." And I said, "Well, I'd be glad to do that." So I did. I think it's confusing, and we shouldn't be questioning how many votes it takes to pass something, or how many people it takes to have a meeting, or what a quorum is. We dealt with part of that last week, or should say on the 24th. This finishes that discussion. We should have, we probably should have had this discussion the same time on the 24th. That would have been the right thing to do, but we didn't have this, we didn't have a briefing before then, so I wasn't able to ask the question and have this dealt with at that time. So this is finishing what we started on the 24th, and I think, I've talked to lots of people about this. I think everybody agrees this is good common sense. We really ought to pass something like this. The city has it. I think they would probably would have passed it anyway. Maybe they wouldn't, I don't know, but it's good law, and I'm glad that the state legislature passed a law at some point that says the majority of that board is required to pass something when there are seven members. And in a sense, it disenfranchises part of the community if we don't have such a law. I think that people need the representation, and for someone to pass something for less than, less than the majority of the county, it just doesn't sound right to me. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know with commissions that do have three members, that two members can talk, they just can't make a decision about their policy, not in open meetings, and there's state law that addresses that, but they can communicate, they just can't decide policy when they're communicating. And yesterday afternoon was the first time that I had been approached by it. I saw it on the, saw it on the agenda, but I do think that if a commissioner wants to bring something up like this, there could be courtesy to extend to other commissioners about this, just like that off-agenda item you were talking about. I didn't know it was coming, so I just know that it's pretty poor policy to not discuss items that you're wanting to bring up, and that's why I'm going to support a deferral, because I just, I don't like the way this was handled.
Thank you. Commissioner Ranzau?
This is amazing. It's comical. You've got three commissioners who brought up an off-agenda item last week and didn't tell two commissioners at all about it, and ram-rodded it through, and put us in legal jeopardy, because they then acted based upon that resolution, even though it wasn't going into effect a week later, because they shut it through so fast, they didn't do a good job vetting the resolution itself, didn't understand the implications, didn't address this issue. Okay, they intentionally kept it from commissioners. And now they're whining because they didn't take the time to look at their agenda they were given last Thursday. You've got to be kidding me. And you guys sit here with a straight face, going, "Actually, say it's his fault that you didn't read your agenda and didn't know anything about it." Maybe you should do your jobs. Maybe you're too preoccupied with this FBI investigation, but this is ridiculous. This is basic common sense. We need three votes. You had time to look at it. What do you need to, it doesn't matter if you want to go to seven commissioners in the future or not. It's not his fault that you didn't take the time to read, and quite frankly, I don't believe he didn't know it was coming anyway. If he didn't, it's because you didn't take the time to read your agenda, so this is just ridiculous. Let's just vote on it. It makes common sense and move on. There's more important things to worry about.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you. I have a question for Commissioner O'Donnell. Did you say that three, and a commission with three commissioners, that the two of them can talk with each other?
Yes, they can talk.
About items of business that might become before the commission?
I know that there's state law that allows them to communicate.
Okay, well, Kansas Open Meetings Act is very clear that you can't discuss items that might become before the commission. You can't have serial communication, and you can't have interactive discussion, and that's very clear. That's exactly what Kansas Open Meetings Act says.
That you can't communicate.
You can talk about your birthdays, and you can talk about your families.
I was just making a point that you can communicate.
Okay, well, I disagree. But nevertheless, that should be very...
You can't even say hi in the hallway.
You can say hi. I just said that.
Oh, okay, so you can't communicate, okay.
I said that. You can talk about birthdays and your families.
All right, all right, good. I'm glad you agree.
But you can't talk about business, and that's the point. You can't have interactive discussion about items of business that might come before your commission. It's exactly what coma says, or serial communication for that matter. If this was so disturbing to my colleagues, I would suggest maybe a red line change to remove the third whereas, if that would please you. But frankly, this is a very simple resolution. I could read this resolution like we did in the 24th, in about one minute. This is very simple. The public supports this. It's the right thing to do. If that third whereas is disturbing, then someone might make a motion to remove that and redline that off, but to defer this makes no sense. It doesn't bother me, but for those of you that are bothered by it, that might be a reasonable motion. If that's what's stopping this from going forward, then I would suggest that maybe take that piece off this resolution, but that shouldn't stop this resolution. We could read this in one minute, and the public supports it. So I'm quite surprised that we would not pass this today. We need to pass this common sense resolution that says it takes three votes to pass something. Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would prefer that we defer this and give you time to rework the language, give a couple commissioners an opportunity to get comfortable with what we're doing. I don't think that there's, that it's going to be objectionable that we pass a policy statement that we're going to take a majority to do county business. At this point, there is no confusion. A county meeting can be held with three commissioners, and a majority of that three can pass county policy. Well, that's, I think we ought to correct that. I'm in agreement with that. I would like to have the resolution rewritten, give commissioners an opportunity to look at it. So because of that, I would move that we, I would make a substitute motion, motion, maybe a motion, but I think it's a motion. I would like to make a substitute motion that we defer this for our next regularly scheduled meeting, which I think is the 28th of November, so that'd be two weeks, and take it up at that time, and with language change, and everybody have a time to look at it, that I believe it will pass unanimously. My motion is to defer.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Howell?
Well, we've allowed substitutes on top of substitutes. Let me make another motion. Let me make another motion then, that we would pass this resolution. I would like to revise it by removing the third whereas statement, where it says currently, whereas the Board of County Commissioners wishes to clarify that binding action shall only be, only be passed with a vote of the majority of members of the body of three. I take that back. It's the third whereas is, whereas this change has created confusion and lack of clarity in how a meeting may be held with only three commissioners and what cost treats the majority in that situation. I'd like to delete that phrase. My motion would be to pass this as written with that phrase removed.
Thank you, Chairman.
We have a motion and a second. I guess I've got, before we meet on the next meeting, I do want answers to my questions, I think I can live with what the substitute to the substitute motion is as long as I have clarity in those questions that I've got, because just as this reads, we can always change it again if we find that there's something we don't, that we find in our research that requires us to change it. So I really don't have a problem with the substitute to the substitute motion, as long as we have clarity, so that we, we can have full answers to all the different questions that I ask. So with that in mind, I can support the substitute to substitute motion. Depending on what the outcome is, we may have to change it again as we learn more information.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I understand your rationale, understand your point. If we're going to pass a resolution with the idea that, well, we probably might have to change it later depending on information I get, it would just seem like you ought to get the information, have a well-written resolution, and then we pass it. I mean, that's what it would seem like to me, but of course, that's just my opinion. That's all I have.
Commissioner Howell?
Well, to the previous comments, I would say that we should have done that on the 24th. That was not something that was well thought out, that we had, that had multiple counselors review it and look for problems. It was pushed through pretty quickly, and I think it left us with this problem today. So I think this has been well thought out. This has been on our agenda. It wasn't brought up off-agenda. We've had briefings, and it's actually about half as long as the one we passed on the 24th. I can't imagine there'd be any problems with what we're passing today, but I understand your point. Thank you, Commissioner Unruh.
And thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Yeah, I'd say, well, I support the chairman getting his, the questions answered. I would, I would just say that if I, I don't think any of those questions really change the nature of this. What other commissions do with three votes, I mean, be interesting, or three commissioners would be interesting, but it didn't change the fact where we're at with five commissioners. And I think we all recognize the prudent action of going with the majority of three being needed under any circumstance. So that's why I'll be supportive of this motion to move forward. I can't really understand why we would need to change this in the future, but based upon those answers, because we're still five, and three is the majority, and that just makes sense, so.
And I don't see that there's a problem with us looking at this for the next two weeks. If there's something that we need still to tweak on it in two weeks, we can do that. I don't see that we're going to have a problem between now and two weeks if we pass this. So that's why I can live with it right now, and we'll do a little bit more thorough vetting. I do wish that Commissioner Howell would have come to me earlier when he started thinking about this, so that I'd have a little bit more time to think it through. I see no other discussion. We have a substitute to the substitute motion. Madam Clerk, do you understand where we're at?
Yes, I do.
Very good. Please call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
I, I, I'm supportive of the fundamental principle.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, Will. You've got another one for us. Madam Clerk, next item, I'm sorry.
Item I, Code of Ethical Conduct for County Commissioners.
Commissioners William Dear, Assistant County Counselor. This is a code of ethical conduct for county commissioners. This mirrors the Kansas County Commissioners Association Code of Ethical Rules. Substantively, it does. We've just inserted Sedgwick County in a few places. I believe this had been floated around or discussed a few months ago originally, and Commissioner Howell had requested this be put on the agenda today. The majority of the items in here really don't create any requirements. There's a lot of shoulds in here. It's just kind of a guideline, more of a spiritual guideline on how county commissioners should conduct themselves. And again, it also says on here that I'm recommending to approve the resolution. This is, this is a policy statement. So as an Assistant County Counselor, I'm not making a recommendation one way or the other. It's up to the will of the board.
Thank you, Will. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I do appreciate this being on the agenda for the discussion this morning. I, I would start, I would tell you, first of all, I started this back in January of 2018. I approached Councilor Yost, actually, asking him to look into this. I'd found out that the KCCA, the Kansas County Commissioners Association, actually had draft, had drafted language back in 2003, which had, by the way, been considered by this county commission numerous times over the years, but for whatever reason, has never been adopted. There are a couple of counties out there, for example, Lincoln County and Lane County, that actually referenced the KCCA document in their own policies. And there may be others. I just found those two very quickly. And so I think this is fairly good language. It's, this is, by the way, this is not directed at any commissioner. This is not because of anything going on. I just think the community wants us to have a code of ethics, and it's the right thing to do, in my opinion. I would share also that there's other counties, such as Johnson County, that has a very robust code of ethics, and so much so that it has a ethics board, creation of an ethics board and a review board. There's power to censure. There's, it, it's very robust. We could go further if we wanted to, but that's not what this is today. This is the KCCA version. I'll tell you also, Wyandotte County has a code of ethics. It's probably the best version. Here it is. And so those are larger counties, by the way. We're also a large county. I think it's time for us to have something in place. We may want to, again, continue to add to this or tweak it as we go forward, but let's get started. I would share with you that there, this is basically about four pages long. There are essentially six principles, and each principle has a number of items under it. As was already stated, there's lots of shoulds in here about how we should treat each other, how we should handle items that come before the board. I think that this is, you know, fairly well-written. There is not any teeth in it, however. So should someone not follow what this says, I guess we can have a discussion about it, but there's no punitive action that would happen as a result of this passing today. For example, Principle One, a county commissioner should be vigorously dedicated to the democratic ideals of honesty, openness, and accountability, accountability in all public matters involving county government. I like that. I think that's pretty good, and there's a couple of items below that. Next one is county commissioners should model decorum, respect for others, and stability in all public relationships. I think that's fantastic. And there's, again, there's items below that defining further what that means. Number three, county commissioners should actively practice stewardship of the county's human, physical, and material resources. Number four, a county commissioner should strive for excellence and continuous learning and personal development in all operations of the county government. Number five, the county commissioners should perform, perform the duties of public office with fairness and impartiality, so as to enhance public confidence in the county government. And number six, the county commissioners should neither seek nor accept favor from any source that may be offered to influence his or her official decision-making. And again, there's, there's numerous things below each one of those principles to define further what those mean. I think those are very good things for us to state today. I think this community needs to, is desperately looking for some of the solutions to some of the controversies that have been happening over the last few months. And this is not pointed at any particular person. This is just simply saying, I heard from the community. They want to be able to trust their leadership, and they want to know that they're doing the right thing for the right reasons, the right way. And so I think this is a, this is a, it's long overdue. We've talked about this, I think, as a county public since 2003, and other large counties have codes of ethics. I didn't look at the other large counties. Some of the small counties have essentially what we have in front of us today. I think it's certainly time for us to pass something that says we are going to do our best. I would suggest we put this on some type of nice, nice printing and have this framed and put in our, in our presence for us to reflect on once in a while as well. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We would adopt the resolution, I'm sorry, we would approve this resolution. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Second. We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Ranzau?
Thank you, yes. I think this is a good start. I do think we need something like this. I actually think we need something with a little more teeth as well, and I'll be checking in into that. But I want to point out a few things. There are sub-bullets to these principles that I think are important. For example, a commissioner should exert good faith and effort to communicate the full truth about county manners and avoid structuring information so as to mislead or gain personal advantage. I think that's important. A commissioner has an obligation to report suspected illegal misconduct by another elected official to the proper investigative authorities. I think that should extend to staff as well. We may look at, that's important. A commissioner should make, should make decisions free from the influence of family members, private business relationships, or other personal relationships. I think that's important. I think a number of these have been violated during my tenure, unfortunately, not by me, but by some. And so I think this is important. It's a good step forward, and I think in the future, we should look at having some sort of enforcement mechanism or reporting system or something like that, like some of these other large counties have. So I appreciate Commissioner Howell's effort on this and initiative to get this started, and I'll be supportive.
Thank you. Commissioner Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, it's been discussed by commissions since I came on board in 2003. I think Commissioner Tom Winters was the first one to try to advance it. Of course, Commissioner Tim Norton, he had it framed and hanging on his, on the wall in his office for his time. I know the chairman brought it up here a few months ago to try to advance it. So it's been brought forward on many occasions, and for whatever reason, we never, we never adopted it. So it's probably time that, that we do go ahead and, and adopt this code of ethics. The KAC is kind of our parent professional organization. They've had it for 16 years as, as part of their recommendations, so it's, it's, it's a good thing to do. I think, I'm, as I think back, trying to think about, why didn't we adopt these, you know, back in 2003, and five, and six, and seven, and all these habits? And I, I'm not sure why. I guess, I think it's because we all put our hand on the Bible and swore that we'd uphold the duties of the Office of County Commissioner. So help me God, when we became commissioners, and I think there was some thought that this was, had some redundancy to it, or it was not necessary. But despite that, I think it's probably a good thing to do, and so as I was on previous times, I'd be supportive of it again.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
And just a point of clarification. If someone wanted to go out and look at the, the document online, it's easy to find, but it's under the KCCA, not the KAC. The KCCA stands for Kansas County Commissioners Association, where the KAC is Kansas Association of Counties. So the KCCA is the one that drafted this, and it's been available to us since 2003. And again, a number, a number of counties refer to their document currently. So if someone wants to go find that, this is, just to be clear, this is exactly their language. We just put it into our format and added Sedgwick County in there a couple of places. But this is actually their words. We didn't draft this or simply adopting their recommended language. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, right after I became the chairman, KCCA sent me a copy of this, and I gave it to Lisa and Carol and asked them to make copies of it to send to all the commissioners at that time. And Lisa actually pointed out to me that above her desk, she had one that was on a nice parchment that was been printed up at some time in, prior to that. I did send it out to all the commissioners back in January and asked them all to take a look at it, and it didn't gain any traction at that time. And now suddenly, it's gained a lot of traction. Back in January, I thought it was a good idea, and I still think it's a good idea. So I don't have a problem with the motion at all. Commissioner Ranzau?
I'll just clarify for the record, back in January, when these were, these were put out, I had these shared with me, and I told staff, well, this looks good. I'm going to come up with some amendments and some changes to give it some teeth, and then they reported back to me there was no longer support for that from the majority. So that's why it died, as far as I'm, as what I've been told. So we'll see what happens in a few weeks if I bring something back with a little bit of teeth and see if we'll get support for that then, because apparently there wasn't, would not have been earlier this, this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? We have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Thank you. Next item, please.
Item J, Resolution Repealing and Replacing Section 8.4B of the Sedgwick County Code.
Commissioners William Dear, Assistant County Counselor, actually have an item here. It's probably a little less controversial. A few weeks ago, we adopted a countywide credit card vendor that's going to start passing along credit debit card fees to the, to the end user, the taxpayer, the customer, as the case may be. And we, we had a section in our, in our county code where when, when folks were paying fines in county court, they, they were being told, at least according to county code, that we were going to pay all those fees. Well, that's no longer accurate. So this is replacing that and stating that the vendor may charge. I left the word "may" in there, just in case we change in the future. It would not necessitate another change, and that those fees will be disclosed to the, to the person before they're charged the fees. And I would recommend approving this resolution because we're going to be charging those fees soon, or the vendor will be charging the fees soon. Excuse me.
Any questions for Will?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I made that we approve the resolution.
We have a motion. Now, section of the motion. Any discussion? Say none. Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Before we go on to the next item, we've got about eight items left. Do we want to take a short break?
Yes, we do.
Take a short recess. Let's say that we'll be back in here at five minutes' time. That gives us plenty of time, I hope. Thank you.
We talked several times about the bond sale and the sale of the Greyhound Park that we were going to earmark those for a building in the future. When are we going to do that?
You can earmark, when are you going to earmark those? That can be done at any time. Yep. But we should report it here in the, I mean, it's still, I mean, those revenues are there. So it would need to, oh, well, excuse me for just a second.
Commissioners, for the record, Lindsey Purusso, CFO, just for the record, we can't earmark anytime, as Rick said, but what we would propose to do is bring to you a year-end transfer that would allocate those dollars as an expense to the 2018 budget and put that in the capital improvement fund so that it is set there for future use.
I think several of us are interested in doing that. We just need to make sure that we're set up to be able to accomplish that.
My apologies for misstating.
Sorry to stop you, but.
That's okay.
And that question for some time.
So as we move now through the property tax-supported funds, the third quarter revenues totaled 221.6 million for property tax-supported funds, an increase of $7.3 million as compared to 2017 same period. The most significant increases here occurred in property taxes, other revenues, miscellaneous revenue, and licenses and permits. The increase in other revenues is due to a transfer of cash into the general fund from the sale of the bonds, as you mentioned. And then the miscellaneous revenue is from the sale of the Greyhound For county property tax-supported funds, still expenditures increased $5 million and totaled $196.7 million. Increases were recorded in contractuals of $10 million, personnel of $2.7 million, while there were decreases in transfers out of $7.3 million and commodities of $400,000. The contractual increase was largely due to the economic development incentives of the inter-local agreement with the city of Wichita on Spirit related to Project Eclipse, as well as the increased use of shopping carts, as I continue to brief each quarter. The decrease in transfers out is largely due to being fewer cash-funded capital projects this year. So here we see the percentage change year over year. As you can see, revenues have increased 3.4%, while expenditures increased 2.6%. And then this is the net income, and you can see that the net income has increased $2.4 million from the third quarter of 17 to the third quarter of 18. We drill down a little bit here, so these are the top 10 revenues in the county property tax-supported funds. As you can see, property tax collections through the third quarter of 18 have increased just over $4 million when compared to the same time period last year. The assessed value grew about 3.2% for the 2018 budget year. Retail sales and use tax increased almost $900,000 as compared to the third quarter, and collections in eight of the nine months in 2018 so far have exceeded collections in the same months of 2017. Medicare fees shows an 18% decrease, and that's primarily due to lower EMS collections. As I brief each quarter, personnel is the largest single category of expense that we incur here at the county. Pension contributions show a 10.2% increase, and that's obviously due to the CAPERS changes. And then overtime shows a 14% increase. And then there's a 6.7% decrease in all other personnel expenditures, and those things are like FICA, work comp premiums, unemployment taxes, and the like. So really, nothing out of the ordinary or extraordinary here. Here are some of the key non-personnel expenditures. So starting at the top, the $700,000 reduction in grant awards is largely due to the relationship change between the county and WATC that I spoke to earlier. The $600,000 reduction you see in medical professional services mainly a reduction in medical detention or detention medical services, I said that backwards, my apology. The software and hardware maintenance line shows a large percentage increase from last year, and that's primarily due to the service contract for the new election equipment that we began in 2018. Moving now to non-tax funds. As I stated at the beginning of the presentation, the county has 31 operating funds which are not supported with property taxes. In these non-tax special revenue funds, revenues have increased $3.4 million. Most significant increases occurred in intergovernmental revenue due to an increase in state revenue received by Comcare, as I spoke earlier about, as our participating community mental health center contract was increased by a million and a half for state fiscal year 2018. Comcare also received an amendment for an additional $1.3 million more for the community crisis center. Additionally, there was an increase in federal revenue in the Division of Health due to the timing of revenue received as compared to 2017. So those are fairly standard practices. Here are the expenditures for non-tax special revenue funds, and they just increased slightly of $1.1 million and are at 56.1% through the third quarter. Again, year-over-year comparisons percentage-wise, that red 2.1 should actually be black, I apologize for that. Revenues have increased 7.1%. Expenditures have increased 2.1%. Again, showing you a top 10 list of revenues in the non-tax special revenue funds. So there are a lot of variances here I want to talk about here. So as I informed you previously, the large increase in KDADs is due to a way we're recording that or reporting that in the accounting system this year. So it used to be recorded in DCF, it's now recorded in KDAD, so it's just a shift in the accounting system of where that's at. The revenue is still coming in. Then as we move down, you'll see fairly large percentage changes in federal-state pass-through. That 37.8% increase is due to increases in programs at the Health Department in WIC, KDHE outreach, and STD program. As we move down, state revenue JJA, you'll see a $41,000 decrease there. That's due to the closing of the skip. And we do move down to federal revenue miscellaneous, large percentage there, 21.1% or a $38,000 decrease. This is due to a HUD voucher program no longer being funded. And then we move down to Medicaid waiver, another large percentage, and that decrease is due to the timing of billing as compared to 2017. So we look at key expenditures, and once again, the largest expenditure here is personnel with salaries and wages. And there really isn't anything significant to report on this slide that's out of line. And the largest percentage change you see there is obviously pension contributions are up 11%, and again, that's a function of CAPERS. Move now to the next section in the quarterly report, which actually would be found behind the fund balances tab. And this is, these are numbers that are reported on a GAAP basis. Previous to this, all the numbers that were shown were reported on a budgetary basis. And that's exciting stuff for accountants, I know, so. So what you see here is a total fund balance of the general fund for the last five years. So you can see there's a clear pattern of how we do this, and the ending fund balance at the end of the third quarter is $96 million, which is slightly above 15, 14, 15, 16, and 17, but right in line with 2013 and 14. This next slide is also a picture of the general fund fund balance, but as a percentage. And as you recall, the county has a fund balance policy that states unrestricted general fund balance be at least 20% of budgeted expenditures. And currently, we sit at 46%. And again, you can still see the clear pattern of the percentage as we move through the tax year, as we collect taxes, and then spend down that balance to the fourth quarter. This is a representation of the county's investment portfolio as of the end of third quarter. As you can see, there's a huge spike from June to September of that blue line, that yield. And that's as a result of, we sold some investments early that were locked in for three years that were earning less than 1%. We took a small penalty on those, and we're going to recover fully 100% in less than 20 months. And what that did was it took our yield up from 1.31% to 2.24%, which is what you see. And we had our investment banker that we work with, we have a contract with, he went out and crunched the numbers and told us this was a good thing to do that puts us back up towards where the yield is. So as the Fed continues to raise rates, we needed to accelerate some of those investments and get those in a higher yield category. So Brandy Bailey does a really good job at managing this portfolio, and I just need to mention her name. Some of the highlights of this is Sedgwick County closed the third quarter with a total portfolio of $210 million. Investment income received this quarter was $277,000, and the current yield again is 2.24%, and that's up from 1.31% for the second quarter of 2018. So it's good news. Move now to some significant capital projects. We begin with jail annex, and this is to upgrade the existing work release building at 701 West Harry to a detention-grade facility capable of housing 180 inmates. Construction on the project should be complete by the end of 2018. The new northeast post, this is to construct on a single slab on-grade pre-engineered metal building with brick veneer, including drive-through bay for two ambulances, base storage, and the ribbon cutting is planned for late December or early January on this. It says the current project completion date is 3/31/19, but it looks like it's going to be 1/19. Moving down, the next two are what we call, those are pair projects. Bridge 478 and 479 are paired. Those are both on Pawnee between 143rd Street East and 159th Street East and 127th and 143rd. So those projects are being done at the same time simultaneously, so those will both be complete, and then that Pawnee will be reopened for that. And then the final is, I keep this on here, the 235 Kellogg Interchange. It says construction is to be complete by spring of 19, but I was out there the other day, and there were a lack of orange cones out there. It looked like maybe it was up and operational. I don't know if that's right or not, but there weren't very many orange cones out there anymore. It's still closed.
It's closed.
Close. Oh, close. I'm sorry, I'm trying to lift read, I apologize. I'm going to move through some of these next slides rather quickly because you've seen them before. These are the statistics of the fiscal stress long-term, so these are annualized numbers that you have seen in the previous quarters. This is the chart from Wichita State Center for Economic Development and Business Research. It shows the leading economic indicators. Again, that slow, steady growth line as we see from 2011 to the present. Long-term economic metrics, again, these are annual numbers that you've seen in previous These are short-term trends. These are new numbers as we compare the third quarter of 2018 to the third quarter of 2017. So it takes that three-month period this year and compares it to the same period last year. So you can see that, so to explain the numbers, even though it shows home sales, new home permits, that data was not available from CEDBR, mortgages registered, that's an up arrow because the decrease is actually less of a decrease than the previous quarter of 2017. There's a sales and use tax increase I spoke of earlier, 5.2%. Total number of employed is up, and the total number of unemployed is, that's a decrease of unemployment of 13.6%, so that's an uptrend also. Okay, as I did last quarter, we did a brief highlight of a department in the finance, so I'm going to do that real quickly, and I'll go through this. And what I'm going to highlight today is our purchase card program. And what you'll see is, is that we have some annual spending data, and I'll just run through these real quick. We spend on average of $2.4 million on our purchase card program, which is $201,000 a month. Average 230 cards are used per month. We have 429 active cards. We made 16,657 purchases. That's 1,300 purchases on the purchase card per month. And we spend, and one of the items that we track is sales tax that is charged to purchase cards in the state of Kansas, which we should be tax-exempt. And we spent $1,900. So it's just a number that we are tracking. We have split transactions, which is another thing that we track when it comes to purchase cards. So we want to know, if you have a purchase card, are you essentially violating county policy by splitting a purchase? If you have, wanted to buy something that's $10,000, let's call it $12,000, instead of spending $12,000, which you cannot do legally using your purchase card, you make two purchases of $6,000 each. Okay, that's a split purchase which violates Charter 68. So we track those as well. And we might have one a month. So here are some of the changes that we had in the purchase card program over the last year. Obviously, we started asking people to be aware of the sales tax that they're spending. We updated the purchase card policy. We switched banks. We went from Bank of America to Central Bank. And we trained all the cardholders on the new purchase card policy and those expectations. So I mentioned that we track sales tax charged that necessarily shouldn't be in the state of Kansas. So this just gives you a brief overview of the amount of dollars that we're talking about. We're not talking about large dollars, but the fact that we're being charged sales tax when we shouldn't be, we're tracking that. And again, it's just, it's just tracking what are appropriate expenses and tracking things that we shouldn't be paying for as part of our internal controls. So one of the things that we are most concerned with when it comes to purchase cards also is fraud. We read about credit card fraud all the time. So we had 18 fraudulent charges on Sedgwick County cards in the past year, but we've only had six in the past seven months, so we're paying attention to that. Okay? Most of those are due to purchasing items online and wherever they're purchasing from not having a secure system. So how are we protected? We should only sign contracts with banks who reimburse us 100% for fraud activity. Manually enter and review every purchase on bank statements, and we do that. We have a person in accounting that actually manually goes through and looks at every transaction every month. And then we encourage our employees to use PPS instead of using your purchase card to purchase things online. So go through our purchasing department and use PPS, and that way we can control those things. So we're watching our fraudulent activity on a monthly basis to see if there's frauds occurring on our purchase card program. And then our cards are chip-enabled, so that should prevent skimming. Should. So that's a brief update of that, of that program that we monitor monthly. Very important program. It obviously allows for efficiencies through purchasing by use of the purchase card, but wanted you to be aware of those. So again, some of the potential threats, I'm going to go back to the original briefing. Some of the threats we see obviously are from the federal, state, and local economy. Key points I want to leave you with is that there are no deficits projected in the general fund for 2018. We still have significant movement over, to occur over the last quarter of the year, and this goes to Commissioner Dennis's point, that revenue from the Greyhound Park sale and the bond issue, proceeds from Spirit and the Reagan Building to be earmarked in the last quarter, transfers at year-end, there it is right there, and then there are still proceeds from the Talon Ship Dissolution Fund, and then movement as it pertains to CAD RMS. So through the third quarter, our financial performance is consistent with our expectations. There's still significant movement in the last, I guess now, month and a half of the year, and there's no deficits projected in 2018. And with that, I would be, I would try to answer any questions you might have, and if there are no questions, I would ask that you would receive and file this report.
Thank you. Commissioner Ranzau?
Yeah, I have a question about overtime, and this may be for manager or somebody else. I noticed the overtime is going up, and we've done a number of things with the last few years as far as pay structure, et cetera, and an effort to decrease overtime. Have we gone back and looked to see if the things that we've done actually had the effect that we thought it was, or are we, some of our, I just need to know if we've done that, and if there's a way to, if we haven't already, if there's a way to follow up on it to see. I mean, there are some departments, I am afraid that no matter what you do, there's never, there's always going to be work, and you're, and maybe we'll always have an overtime issue, but I just want to see if it's panned out the way we thought, or if we know yet.
I think we go through this every, every budget cycle, and this year, we actually did see a lot of success in a lot of, except in the sheriff's office. I know we continue to see large overtime use there, over 60 vacancies total in the sheriff's office. So that's probably the biggest area where we're not seeing a whole lot of success in what we're doing. But we have seen a whole lot of success. I know specifically, if you remember in the budget where we addressed the call center, and we spent a lot to try to put more positions in the call center to try to draw down not only the queue line, but also how, how long the wait is for a, a person calling in for the 911 call center. And, and the money and the resources we tied into that definitely decreased our overtime.
So it may be helpful to see some trend lines and data from different departments, then some maybe going down, and maybe the sheriff not a whatever, so we can kind of break that out, see more details.
Absolutely. We'll do that.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. I have just a couple of questions. On slide number two in your debt column, you have a negative $942,000 in net change in fund balance. Can you please explain that again?
That is, that, that change is due to shift of funding as it relates to the relationship between the county and Wichita State and WATC.
Okay. All right. So what will that do in the future? They're just going to, is this just a, we'll see that in the, in the yearly summary, but we won't see this next year.
That's correct.
Okay, okay. I'm a little confused on slide 20 and 21, I'm sure, 21 and 22, on the mortgages registered. I see from 16 to 17, the mortgage, mortgages registered went down from $18,000 to $17,000, and that's shown as a negative trend. And then, in the next slide on page 20, slide 22, shows as an uptrend, but it still shows negative 8.7%. Is that, am I misunderstanding that?
The, okay, this, this slide is often confusing because it's comparing third quarter of 18 performance to third quarter of 17 performance. So even though that may be a negative number, it's a smaller negative number than it was in third quarter of 17, so that's why it's a positive trend.
Okay. Do we have the numbers of, do we have the number, maybe missing it somewhere, mortgage registered, mortgages registered, is there a number somewhere?
Yes, I have those numbers.
Okay.
I'd be happy to share.
So my interpretation of this, is this, is this a good trend or a bad trend? I don't understand.
So are you looking at this slide right here?
Slide 20.
That's up on the?
Yes.
Okay. So it's, it's a good trend.
Okay.
Because the third quarter of 2017, there was a 9% decrease from the third quarter of 2016.
Okay.
So the comparison now is the third quarter of 2018 is less of a decrease.
Okay.
I know it's, it's double speak.
Yeah.
It's less of a decrease, so it's a positive trend.
Okay, if you say so.
If I thoroughly confused you, if so, I've done my job.
Oh, well, I have to get my red pen out and figure out what to do here. Anyway.
But I do have the numbers of that that I received.
Okay.
And I'd be.
That might be helpful.
Yes, sir.
The numbers might be, we'll clear this out probably.
I'd be happy to share.
Really, I think you did a great job. You know, my, my anecdotal sense is, this is a pretty positive report. Things are trending in a good direction overall. You say at the end, there are no deficit spending. Now, if we make a decision on the zoo this year, to use some of our funds this year, would that create deficit spending potentially? I mean, I think maybe a decision potentially coming up about taking some money, I don't know.
Not knowing what that number is, I would have a.
But, okay, so again, going back to 2015, there's some numbers, you can see some bumps in some of your trends going back to 2015. That was a $5.3 million to the, to the elephant exhibit, I think, that caused that to happen.
Mm-hmm.
If we, if we do something like that, take money out of ending balances and fund something at the zoo, that might show up as deficit spending, but we're simply spending, potentially spending money we have right now that exceeds our minimum ending balances, we can make a choice to spend that if we want to.
That's correct. And if you recall back to that slide where I showed the, the fund balance.
Sure.
As a percentage of budget expenditures, we're well above that 20% minimum line.
Well, I guess I bring this up because debt and, you know, increasing debt or deficit spending, although they sound like they're similar things, they're really not the same thing. One of them is spending, you know, money out of savings, for example. If your budget's healthy and you've got, you know, extra money in the, in the budget that you make a choice to spend that somewhere, it might come across as deficit spending, but that sounds negative. But if you ever spend that money, it's going to show up as deficit spending. Whereas debt is basically spending, you know, money we don't have, that's going to be paid off in the future date. So overall, I'm, I'm pretty pleased with this, but I guess we have some decisions. Usually at the end of the year, we have, we need to make some decisions on any, any projects we might want to fund. And I'm not saying we shouldn't necessarily, but I know those, those discussions are likely to happen coming up here. So with that, I would make a motion to receive and file.
Say it. We have a motion and a second receiving file. One question on key points, you talked about CAD RMS. Where are we at on CAD RMS? Hi, Rusty.
Good morning, for the record. Rusty Leeds, Assistant County Manager, Public Safety. So the CAD RMS, the funding will be available in 2020, the full funding for the CAD RMS replacement. So currently, emergency communications, Laura Forshee and the sheriff's staff are working on the RFP, which we anticipate releasing in mid-19, so that by the end of 19, we're able to have a vendor selected and then initiate purchase in early 2020 and begin implementation in 2020. So that's kind of the timeline that we're on based on how the funding is allocated.
Good. And one point, when you and I spoke just a day or two ago, said that Wichita has gone their own direction.
Yes, sir. That, that decision was made. They, they moved with an RMS system for their police department and a new records management system for their municipal court as well. So they've already taken action to replace those on their side of the street. We're working, emergency communications and the sheriff are working together on a CAD and law enforcement and jail management record system for the county.
Okay. Well, I was a little distressed when you told me that the city of Wichita has gone their own direction on CAD RMS. I would hope we would be able to partner with that, but I want to make it clear that any interface that Wichita needs in order to be able to get into our CAD RMS is going to be funded by Wichita, not by Sedgwick County.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Very good. We have a motion and a second receiving file. Madam Clerk, call roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item L.
Wait a minute. Lindsey had something she wanted to say. I'm sorry. Disregard last transmission.
I'm sorry, Commissioners. Lindsey Purusso, CFO. I did want to just take a moment. We will talk about this at the employee recognition ceremony, but to commend Rick Durham, who is our deputy CFO, who is the, kind of the point person on our financial audit, and the accounting team. We did receive notification about a week and a half ago that our 2017 CAFR has again won the annual GFOA award, as well as our popular annual financial report. So you'll hear more about that, but wanted to give them an opportunity to have some public recognition.
Outstanding. Congratulations very much.
And now I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have anything else, Rick?
Nope. Thank you.
All right. Now, next item, please.
Item L. Authorized payment of the annual membership fee for the.
Authorized payment of the annual membership fee for the South Central Kansas Economic Development District.
Welcome back, Brent.
Good to be here. Again, for the record, I'm Brent Shelton with the Division of Finance, and the item before you is to approve the annual membership in the South Central Kansas Economic Development District and authorize the payment of those dues. Excuse me, before I get into my remarks, I want to recognize Steve Wilkinson. He is the Executive Director of SKED. He's in the audience today, and he's here to demonstrate his continued commitment to supporting your initiatives and your priorities as a member of the South Central Kansas Economic Development District. SKED was formed in 1972. It's a nonprofit organization, excuse me, designed to bring together communities and advocate for economic growth. SKED is historically operated in a 14-county region, although they have expanded to one of their housing programs now to 41-county area covering across southwest Kansas. As a member, Sedgwick County is the largest of the member counties, and we have been a member since the inception of SKED in 1972. They offer grants and loan programs from federal and state regional programs, and they are asking that we continue our membership in the organization, and they seek funding support of $60,000 for that membership. That's lower than it was historically when it was based on population. It's been a flat fee for the last several years. Their budget, about $885,000, is just about a percent higher than it was prior year. Their request continues to be the same amount. Now, when you provided funding to SKED last year, you asked them to spend county funds on economic development. That was your focus, and in their annual report, they've indicated to us that that is exactly where the county revenues to SKED went. They have also, you also implored them to help you understand better what your return on investment was for your dollars that you spent with SKED. And to that end, they have focused those efforts more on economic development and tried to provide some measures back to us in their annual report. One of the things that they have told us is that they're working more now with other economic development agencies in a better concerted effort, so that the experts in one area are taking care of that area and avoiding some of the duplication that was of concern in the past. One of the specific things that SKED has mentioned is that they are strengthening their role in providing capital to small businesses. They have championed organizing broadband access, which is a big economic development driver in rural areas, and that they have organized broadband access meetings with different governmental and business leaders throughout this region. They are also pointing to a successful broadband conference and a new state task force that's coming to Sedgwick County to participate in a symposium to better understand business needs in terms of broadband. Steve also has indicated that they're working on, with Wichita State, to consider the feasibility of an equity-based seed fund for investments in startup companies. So they are doing more things to focus that lending activity towards small businesses, towards startups, to providing them with some infrastructure needs that have been lacking in the past. So to that extent, I think they've listened and are moving toward, forward with some of those recommendations that you've made. Starting in 2016, the county hasn't identified specific economic development allocations out of that fund, so that's why we're here today, to seek support for continued membership in SKED. The invoice would be $30,000 for the second half of 2018, and then the first, another $30,000 in the first half of 2019, for a total of $60,000 for the county membership for the 2018, 2019 fiscal year for SKED. I would recommend that you approve the continued membership of Sedgwick County in SKED and authorize the payment of the membership fee. With that, I will stand for questions.
Any questions for Brent? Commissioner Ranzau?
Now, this, this went through the budget process, but wasn't included in the original budget, right?
Right. It was, we didn't, for the last about three years, we haven't identified specific allocations, but rather established a pool of money to use for economic development, and then they come in and make specific requests. So that's why you're hearing it today.
Did, did you do one of those worksheets that we're supposed to do for economic development requests? And I have not seen it.
Okay. It was basically, I think I updated one back in August when this was considered as a staff meeting, but I can give you a copy of that again.
He passed one out of the staff meeting.
In August?
When, when he, when he spoke.
I don't know. Well...
I'll get you another copy.
Yeah. But, and where's this money going to come from?
The Economic Development Fund.
Yeah. Well, I'm still not convinced, I mean, that we're any better off. You know, I, I just don't see us having a good strategic plan here at the county as far as how we're going to address economic development. I mean, we just kind of take the GWP for granted, we throw money at that, and we do some, then we say, we're not going to do this, or we are going to do that, but there doesn't really seem to be a rhyme or reason. So I guess, I mean, we spend $30,000 for GWP, and I think all we get in return is a bunch of smoke and mirrors. It might be the SKED actually does a better job in some areas, but we don't really, we don't do an honest assessment of all the potential partnerships out there. So I'm kind of conflicted here, but I mean, I'd prefer that we, I mean, if you were going to, you know, on behalf of the taxpayer, I want bang for my buck. If you're going to say you're take $60,000 out of the $300,000 that we give to the GWP, then I might be willing to support it, but just throwing it on top of the $300,000 that we don't really get anything for but a bunch of, like I say, expensive smoke and mirrors, and it's kind of problematic. It'd be nice if at some point we'd go forward, we put a lot, sit down and analyze things, you know. I think we should focus on entrepreneurs, but we're not doing that. It's all about incentives. If we do an honest analysis and see, see what we could do, what the best route would do, that means we'd have to put aside, you know, put aside political alliances and campaign contributions and political rhetoric, and actually do an honest analysis of the best ways to do this. That would be the way to do it. Now, I don't expect that's going to happen, but I think that's the way it should be done. So those concerns will be reflected in my, in my vote today.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Howell?
I'm sorry for touching the microphone. Is there a, can you tell me what, how much revenue we, we budgeted for the Economic Development Fund and what that balance is today? Do you know?
I would have to, Lindsay can probably speak better than...
I'm sorry to surprise you with a detailed question.
Lindsay Purus, CFO. So the economic development program we're referencing here is actually in the County General Fund, and so that program specifically does not bring in any revenue on its own. We do have some other programs that we budget for within economic development that are in economic development grants. We do estimate about $40,000 of revenue into that program. But overall, for this specific program, it's just funded with general, general fund revenues.
But we have an economic development budget item?
Right. It's a program within the general fund, and that's, the contractual's amount for 2018 is roughly 1.8 million. Of that, we would spend the $60,000 for SKED from that, and in the information that you heard from Rick a bit ago, the $60,000 is included in that financial forecast.
Right. We, so we did plan on this when we passed the budget for 2018 and for 2019.
We, we had planned for the, for traditional levels of spending, but not necessarily earmarked for this specific item.
Right, right. Remember, we made that change a few years ago. Give us some discretion as we move forward on how to best spend the money.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I, I, I would tell you that, well, thank you for the answer. I have been, so Mr. Wilken, Wilkinson, Wilkinson?
Wilkinson.
Wilkinson, I'm sorry. You know, you're, you're a new, new personality trying to reinvent, if you will, SKED, and I think you're a good person, and I, and I think you have a good passion for this, and I, I am cautiously optimistic. I do think we need to have effective government, we need to measure ourselves, make sure that what we do actually works. So you know, you're on, you're on the, I guess, I'd just say, we're, we're looking at you very closely to make sure this actually does work, okay? And so right now, because you're new to this, and I would like to give you an opportunity, opportunity to perform and make this happen. I think, I think the, the mission of SKED is good, and I, and I want them to be successful. So I'll support, I'll support them, the, I'll support this today, but I'd like to let you know that going forward, we need to see some, some effective results at some point. In other words, you know, I don't mind, I don't mind not supporting something and finding something else that maybe we think works better, if that's what we have to do in the future, but today, I think we need to support you. I think we budgeted for this, and we have the, the funds set aside for this purpose, and so I'm going to, I'm going to support this today. In fact, I make a motion, we would approve the payment of the membership fee.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Brent, how long have we been supporters of REAP, I'm not REAP, excuse me, of SKED?
Since 1972, so that's 46 years.
So forty-seven years we've been involved at somewhere around this level?
Right. And in prior years, it's been a higher level because it was a different formula for calculating the membership fee.
Okay. And Mr. Wilkinson's been on board now for what, little over two years?
Sixteen months.
Sixteen months.
Sixteen months. That's a little over one year.
That's right.
All right. Well, we appreciate the, I've seen Steve at a lot of other meetings, at REAP meetings and different things, appreciate his effort, his passion for making this thing work, and I'm going to be supportive of the request.
Thank you. Mr. Wilkinson, do you have something you want to say?
I do. I wasn't going to share this, I was going to just keep my lips tight here, but I did want to share, prior meeting that I attended, I shared about a program that we had applied for. Thursday, we were awarded, last Thursday, we were awarded by the Small Business Administration a loan program called the Community Advantage Program. We are the only organization in the state of Kansas that was awarded this program. The value of this program is it provides additional financing to entrepreneurs and startups, and has a focus towards veterans. A great example right now is a discussion we're having now with an Army veteran from Fort Riley, who's getting out, who has mechanical skills, diesel mechanical skills. He can't get a bank loan right now, so we're helping him with his business plan, we're providing him cash flow projections with the intent of providing him financing so he can occupy a building, buy some lifts, and some equipment for his shop. Our intention or objective is, in the next two, three years, provide him business-based technical assistance for free from SBA grant, so in three years, he can go to a bank and get less expensive financing. So our goal really is to be paid off. This program provides four sources of revenue for us. We can resell these loans because they're guaranteed, they get a 10% guarantee, I'm sorry, 10% yield. So my goal here in the next two to three years is to be self-sustaining. This is a real game changer for us, and we're looking forward to promoting it statewide. And we know, because of our loan volume, most of that, or primarily principally, that loan volume will be here in Sedgwick County. Thank you.
Thank you. One thing I wanted to say, first of all, I noticed you mentioned broadband during your discussion, and a lot of people think of Sedgwick County as being very urban, but truth is, there is a lot of rural area in Sedgwick County, and they're not served well by broadband. Any efforts you can do to help bring broadband to all of Sedgwick County would be greatly appreciated. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Next item, please.
Item M. Consideration of a grant application in the amount of $71,500 for activities related to the prevention of drug misuse to the Kansas Department of Health and Environment for the Sedgwick County Division of Health.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chris Stewart, Health Protection Director. Before you is an opioid overdose crisis response grant funding from Congress through CDC and KDHE to fund local prevention responses to opioid misuse. This is a one-time funding opportunity of up to $75,000, and is only being made available to local health departments. This is to be spent between December 2018 and August 2019. The Division of Health is well positioned to receive this funding from KDHE due to our partner relationships and our expertise in data collection and analysis. This grant will help the Division of Health work with partners on prevention strategies to decrease opioid and other drug misuse. There are a number of objectives to meet in this grant. To name a few, we would collect local data from additional partners, establish data use agreements, and in conjunction with the University of Kansas School of Medicine Wichita, provide trainings to medical providers. In addition, we will assist with implementation of an evidence-based screening tool at Health Core Clinic to identify a patient's risk for misuse of alcohol and drugs. The Division of Health will evaluate the effectiveness of the screening tool implementation. Also, the Division of Health will create an action plan for prevention. To accomplish all of the above, we would hire two part-time temporary positions. I recommend you approve the grant application, authorizing acceptance of the award, and the implementation of the staffing table changes.
Thank you. Questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'm here, we take the recommended action.
Second? We have a motion and a second. Discussion? I talked to Adrian about it briefly, but our opioid and methamphetamine problems here in Sedgwick County is probably larger than most people believe. Right now, the sheriff's department, the police department, fire from all across Sedgwick County are involved in it every day. On top of that, our health department's deeply involved in it, our comm care folks are deeply involved in it, our DA is having to prosecute these. And the other night, when I talked to the DA, 11% of the people that are arrested have methamphetamines on them at the time of the arrest, 11%. And that doesn't mean the ones that are, might be high on it, have already used it or threw it away before they got arrested. So they've already got it, actually got it on them. Doesn't count what it's costing us for our judges in order to be able to do this. Doesn't cost, include what it costs us to incarcerate these folks over at Sedgwick County Jail. So anything that we can do, and I appreciate the fact that we're looking at this grant, but on top of that, we have agreed to fund, and along with some other folks, a drug and opioid physician in Sedgwick County and a mental health physician, because mental health and the drugs are pretty well related. So I am a strong supporter of this. I, I think it's going in the right direction. We've got to come up with some solutions. Instead of incarcerating all these folks, we've got to find out some other things that we can do. So I will definitely be in favor of it. I see no other comments at this time. Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Ranzau?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, please.
Item N. Consideration of a grant application in the amount of $783,868 to the Health Resources and Service Administration for Healthy Start Initiative funding to provide Healthy Babies Program services at the Health Division.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Nichelle Williams, and I am currently the Program Manager for the Healthy Babies Program. Before you is a request of approval for the grant application for the Health Resource, the Health Services Resources Administration, which is also known as HERSA, for $783,868 for the Healthy Start Initiative funding for Healthy Babies Program. This funding is an increase of $39,270 to help supplement the cost of adding one full-time employee for the outreach, Community Outreach Coordinator. The Healthy Babies Program is an educational program for prenatal and parenting families. We currently have registered nurses and community liaisons to provide education and family support to the fam, those families at their home visits and office visits. The Healthy Start funding supports part of the Healthy Babies Program. In 2017, we provided services to approximately 750 women. We've had this grant for 20 years. The purpose of Healthy Start Grant is to improve program outcomes before, during, and after pregnancy, and to reduce racial, ethnic differences to rate in the infant deaths. To be eligible for this grant, zip code areas have to have an infant mortality rate of 8.8 or greater. For this five-year grant period, we'll be focusing on ten zip codes, compared to the eight that we had last year, or should I say, the last grant cycle. Three of those zip codes from the last five-year grant cycle are no longer eligible, due to the decreases in infant mortality. Those zip codes are 67209, 67216, and 67037. The zip codes we will be focusing on during this next five years are 67205, 67207, 67208, 67210, 67211, 67213, 67214, 67217, 67218, and 67219. Beginning in the physical year, the Healthy Start Program will serve all families, infants, and the families, for the first eighteen months after the birth, versus currently right now, what we're doing, is up to twenty-four months, as previously done. This program allows the program to focus resources on healthy pregnancies, birth outcomes, while ensuring support for the children through critical milestones such as immunizations. This change will also increase program capacity, to allow us to serve more program women that are pregnant. I recommend you approve this grant submission, and if awarded, authorize the chairman to accept the award and implementation of the staff change table. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the bench? Commissioner Randzow?
Well, I just asked a few comments. We had a good conversation yesterday with Michelle and Adrian, but I had a good conversation five years ago, with Adrian and whoever else was there at the time, and I have some concerns about this. Back five years ago, I asked for evidence that this program worked, that is, to decrease the disparity, the racial disparity, and the report I was given from KU indicated that there, that it didn't. There was no evidence that it did work. It did increase WIC and ROMA, but it didn't reduce disparities, and it hasn't for twenty years. I also had concerns about having a program that could sustain itself in the community. The problem is, like, in these, these areas here, you have 10,000 live births, we only have so much staff, we can't go out to 10,000 homes. There has to be something organic to the community that, that gets created, that can sustain itself, to get the biggest bang for the buck. We're limited to the number of people that we can touch, and I think that's why the effectiveness is not there. We've got a lot of data here, you know, I think there's one area, we had this conversation, within 67214, and the black community in that area, that, that rate is down to 4.9, and I've got information, that's because there's, there's efforts organically in the community that have made that happen, that are far beyond anything we can do as, as the government. But in these other areas, there's not. So I have concerns, I said then, five years ago, I think I've voted for this stuff intermittently since then, I said, we don't, I challenged the Health Department to go out and find a plan that would be effective and sustainable, and I'm disappointed that I don't think we're there yet. And we have lots of good people there, working and doing good stuff, and trying to do what they do, but from a strategic point of view, I don't think we've gotten, gotten to where we need to be, to, or a strategic plan to get to where we need to be, and that's disappointing. And so, I said then, that if, if something hadn't changed, and we hadn't addressed that, then I wasn't gonna support the next five-year cycle, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna issue my, voice my concerns, you know, by voting no, not because I, I don't appreciate all the hard work and effort that's going on, but we need to have programs that are effective and sustainable, and it's just, it's just not there. And we need to rethink this, we, I know we're looking, I was told we're looking for a different type of program that might be more effective, and that's fine, but five years is a long time, and when we look at programs that are important, you know, I just have these concerns. Now, I know, I'm not supposed to vote no on something like this, I'll be called all sorts of things, but guess what, you know, I'm gone in two months, and it's not gonna matter, not that it mattered to me before, but I do this because I care, because I sincerely believe that we need to try to get to a point that it's effective and sustainable, and in my estimation, we're not there. Okay? So, I challenge the question, or the system, I've asked, asked some things, I gave them five years, try to do something, try to do something different, I'm gonna keep challenging you again, I think you're open to looking at things, and I appreciate that, and I hope, I hope we're able to get, I mean, we have an example in one area, where I think we've gotten, the community has gotten to where it needs to be, I mean, that's impressive, okay? But somehow, we've, we've gotta be deliberate about getting to that same point in other areas as well. And so, I could talk about this for a long time, we talked about it yesterday, I appreciate all your help and your enthusiasm, and so, my vote will reflect my concern about the strategic plan, not your efforts or your staffs, I appreciate everything you do, and I think you'll continue to do a good job, and, but we just have to do a better job at a strategic level, I think, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make a couple of points here. We talked yesterday, again, thank you for visiting with me yesterday on this, and I would make a point that the Sedgwick County is statistically on the wrong end of the spectrum on this issue. We, we actually have in our, in our strategic, our strategic plan, to try to find ways to address and improve the numbers on our infant mortality, and we've not substantially changed the data yet. I've only been here for four years, and unfortunately, a lot of the data we're looking at is, is older, so it's hard to know dynamically if the things we're doing are, are making a difference, and I think there's privacy concerns with, with HIPAA laws and things like that, so we don't really have dynamic response on what we're doing. But also, stated up front, I'll support the grant, but I'm concerned that we're not being effective with our efforts. I'll just make another point, we're only, by my calculations, we're only touching about 7.6% of our population that needs, potentially could use some help. When I say, who could use some help, I'm thinking the entire audience of Sedgwick County, you know, struggles with higher than we would like to see infant mortality. We're focused on ten zip codes that have a higher incidence of this, of course, but the numbers are so, you know, talking eight point, 8.8 is being the, the, the number that we use to say they're qualified for this program, for the Healthy Start, or Healthy Babies Program. I guess the Healthy Start, Healthy, Healthy Start's one-third of the program, but it's overall, it's called Healthy Babies. But if you look at the other zip codes, it's not, not like the numbers are substantially, you know, good numbers, it might be slightly less than one, 8.8, but they're not great. And so, I have raised the issue of trying to find a, you know, a different way to do this, I don't know what we can find, but I appreciate Director of our Health Department, Adrian Burnletz, trying to look for other programs that might be more effective, I think we ought to be open to that. I've also raised the issue of baby boxes, maybe, maybe we ought to be looking at that as a potential solution. So with that, I'll support this today, but I'll just tell you that, I think that unfortunately, the numbers have not been, have not drastically improved, and I'm, I'm very disappointed as a member of our Board of Health, that we're not really solving the problem. It's not your fault, Michelle, you're a great person, you're doing the best you can, and you've been given the, the details of these programs, you're doing a great job doing the program as, as you are told you have to do it. Altogether, we're spending $1.768 million on the Healthy Baby, Healthy Babies Program overall. Our focus, and correct me if I'm wrong, our focus is roughly 800 women of our community, we have, that's over eighteen months, and so, if you do the math, based on the number of live births we have per year, that's about 7.6% of our population, and with that, I just don't see, even if you were 100% successful in that population, you're still not gonna really solve the problem in a satisfactory way overall for the entire county. So, I know we're doing our best, but we're, we're trying really hard, but we're just not seeing the numbers move in the right direction. So with that, I'll, I'll support this, I'll be glad to make a motion at the appropriate time. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Randzow?
Yeah, just want to elaborate, and then ask Adrian a question. Keep in mind, he said, you know, we touch about 7% of the people, that means we don't touch about 92 to 93%, okay? And that's the problem, that's what limits the effectiveness and the sustainability. If you're gonna tou, you gotta touch all those other people, or have mechanism to do that, and that has to come from the community, I think. But we have to deliberate, be deliberate and create mechanisms to touch those other people. But beyond that, when we talk about what our rate is compared to the state and, and the nation, let's say, I think we, like, at the state level or nation, do you know, how, how does that number, is it compared county to county? Like, we have some counties in Kansas that have low, and, and some that are high, and we might be being compared, or, to counties that don't have the same socioeconomic issues or diversity, or whatever. Is, is there a way to, to pull that out and compare ourselves to like communities, is what I'm getting at? Do you understand what I'm saying? Similar population, and, and income, and all that sort of stuff, to kind of see how we compare there, as opposed to some other counties or locations? Because when you throw it all together, you're, you're doing averages, right? But we really need to compare ourselves to like communities, I'd like to see some data on that, if, if it's possible, or if you know how to do that.
Good morning, Commissioners, Adrian Burn.
Or you can email if you.
Yeah. And when we compare ourselves, oftentimes, it's to Wyandotte County. Do you know what the numbers are for Wyandotte by chance? But we, we will look at that, and, and send that to you, for Wyandotte.
Okay, but, okay, and, and that's fair, but you need to look at socioeconomic status as well, because if you look at all those indicators, as far as, you know, average income and all that other stuff, I mean, I, I look at the reports that we get, you know, I don't know what, I can't remember what the name of that report is, you know, the state of the counties and all, all that stuff. I mean, there, I mean, there's a direct correlation there to, to socioeconomic status and income and stuff. So, I'm saying, and that's good, but what about others, other communities throughout the country that have a similar income level, et cetera, to see how we compare to them? I mean, I, I think that would be helpful, and we might be better, we might be worse. I mean, if, if we're better than them consistently, that tells us, maybe we're doing better than what we thought, but if we're not, those are the communities, I, I mean, I don't think I would look necessarily to Wyandotte, because I don't think we can, we can emulate Wyandotte, okay? But if we had communities that were similar to us in socioeconomic status and income, that were doing better than us, then we could go to them and say, hey, okay, now what are you doing, how are you less? You follow what I'm saying?
Yes.
So, anyways, then that, that thought, I thought about that last night, and he just reminded me, so I, I think we should look into that, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you. Thank you for your work on this program, I know how important it is to so many people, and the fact that you guys are actively trying to have a, have a wider reach into new zip codes, reaching new people, I think is important, and it goes to what some of the arguments that we've just heard from the last two Commissioners, is that we, we do need to work on trying to get this out as much as possible, but you can't do that without resources, and there's only so much federal resources that we have, so it's something that needs to be a policy decision from the, the Board of Health, from the County Commissioners, if we want to invest more money into the Health Department, to get some of these programs to a wider audience. But it's, it's all, it's, a lot of it's our policy too, because this is a federal grant that we're accepting today. But, you know, if, if we need to be investing more resources towards the Health Department for this, that's something that we need to work with you and Adrian on. But, but it is critical that, that we never lose sight of the fact that, that we have a duty, as the Board of Health, to, to make sure we're making Sedgwick County as healthy as possible for our half a million-plus citizens. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Michelle, I just want to put my two cents in, I, I believe that you all are making strong effort to try to address this problem, you and all your staff. You folks are the people who are on the ground, and who have diligently studied this issue, and you're, I do not for a second believe that you're not trying, and that you're not trying to think about new ways to attack the problem, and to focus, focus your efforts where it does the most good. I do think that the socioeconomic area that you've identified is somewhat unique in, not only in Kansas, but perhaps in the United States, and I think you're fighting a really tough battle, and trying to showing, to show great, successful numbers. I just want you to express it to your folks you're working with, that we know you're putting in a lot of effort, and doing a good job, and you're the experts on the ground, and we appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate Commissioner Randzow being conscious for us to keep this moving, and consider what the implications are in, in trying to protect our community. I appreciate Commissioner Howell's comments, that we're only touching 7.6%, but I'll guarantee you that those 7.6% that we're touching are, are very appreciative of what we're doing, so we are making a difference in their lives. It'd be wonderful if we had the resources to go out and touch people beyond that, and that's something that, if we have a conscience like Commissioner Randzow, maybe we need to take a look at that in the future, but I'm definitely supportive of, of the grant. I think Commissioner Howell was ready to make a motion.
Yes, sir, I would make a motion, we would take the recommended action.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Randzow?
No.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Next item, please. Thank you.
Item O, consideration of a Sunflower Foundation grant in the amount of $183,508 for the support of a redesign of Sedgwick County's behavioral health care system.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, Joan Tammany with COMCARE, we're at Item O, so we're getting there. I'm here today because COMCARE in Sedgwick County have been provided grant funding, and the opportunity to accept that grant funding from the Sunflower Foundation, to support the salary of the Behavioral Health Community Collaborator. While we've had knowledge of this funding opportunity since mid-June, we had some requirements before we would be formally granted the, the funding, and if you recall, back during the budget process, each of you supported adding the Behavioral Health Consultant position to the staffing table for COMCARE, and then we also had to post the position, and interview for the position, and then we had to write the grant proposal retrospectively for the funding. So all of that has been completed. I think Tim sent out the notice yesterday, we're pleased to say that the Behavioral Health Community Collaborator has been hired. The individual who has been selected is Jennifer Wilson, she goes by the name of Jen. She's internal to COMCARE, energetic, enthusiastic, well-familiar with the community, and I think she'll get off to a running start pretty quickly. So, just a reminder, the position falls under COMCARE, but it will report directly to Tim Kaufman, in the County Manager's Office at this time. The grant, the letter of agreement supports payment of $183,508 toward the salary and benefits of the position over two years. So I'm simply here to ask that you accept the grant award, authorize the chairman to sign and approve, to sign the letter of agreement, and to approve establishment of the budget authority, as provided in the financial considerations. I also want to just publicly acknowledge Billy Hall with the Sunflower Foundation and her board, for seeing the value of this position in Sedgwick County, and supporting the initiative to look at a behavioral health access in our community. She's been a good partner with COMCARE for many years on other grants, and now will be so with Sedgwick County, if you guys accept the grant.
Thank you, Joan. Any questions from the staff, or from the bench? Commissioner Unruh?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I just want to say that I'm delighted that we have made the progress to get this position somewhat identified, and getting their acceptance. For some time, the thought has been that we needed someone specifically designed, or specifically directed, to carry out this function, because we had so many partners working together, who all had different responsibilities. I think this person can really help move the goal forward of providing better behavioral health services to our community, and in doing that, save all the partners in the community a lot of money, with the programs that can be initiated. So, very supportive of this, thanks for your work on it, and Mr. Kaufman, thank you for moving this forward, taking a while to do it, but I'm glad we're here. But with that, I would move that we take the recommended action.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any other, any other Commissioners have anything they'd like to say? Very good, well, I'm definitely supportive of this, along with the drug problem that I already talked about, mental health problem is the other one, and they're really related very closely together, so I definitely support this. Seeing no other comments, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Randzow?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh?
Aye.
Chairman Dennis?
Aye.
Thank you, Joan, for being here, I appreciate it. Well, good morning, Joe.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mr. Chairman? I guess, ready for?
Good afternoon, Joe.
Oh, it is afternoon, all right. Ready for the Board of Bits and?
We're ready.
Okay.
Do you want me to call it?
Oh, next item, I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, next item.
Item P, Report of the Board of Bits and Contracts Regular Meeting on November 8th, 2018.
Thank, now we're ready.
Yeah, good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director, the meeting- Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director, the meeting of the Board of Bits and Contracts on November 8 resulted in eight items that we'd like to present for your recommendation. Our first item is the bridge improvements for Public Works. This is a pedestrian bridge on Meridian between 55th and 63rd Streets South. The recommendation is to accept the low bid from King Construction Company in the amount of $3,082,833.60. I'd like to point out that acceptance of this request is contingent upon your approval of additional budget authority, and that will be item U in your consent agenda today. Item number two, street improvements for Public Works, and this is a Sharice Wood addition. This recommendation is to accept the low bid from Pearson Construction LLC in the amount of $202,292. Item number three is Rock Salt Public Works. Recommendation is to accept the low bid from Hutchison Salt Company and establish contracted rates as listed for one year with two one-year options to renew. Our fourth item is the NCAT Gateway Exterior Wall Flashing Replacement for Project Services. This recommendation is to accept the low bid from Gualtney Incorporated, they're doing business as Diamond Roofing, and that's in the amount of $330,000. Item number five, Cronos Workforce Maintenance and Support. This is for information technology support services and emergency medical services. This recommendation is to accept the quote from Cronos Incorporated in the amount of Item number six is SAP Signature Management by DocuSign HR for Human Resources. This recommendation is to accept the quote from SAP America Incorporated and to establish contract pricing for five years. Item number seven, Liebert Air Handlers, the air conditioning units, this is Emergency Communications and Information Technology and Support Services. This recommendation is to accept the quote from Vertiv Services Incorporated and to establish contract pricing listed for a three-year period. And item number eight, EMS Billing Services for Division of Finance and Emergency Medical Services. This recommendation is to accept the proposal from Advanced Data Processing Incorporated, also known as Intermedix, for the rates shown for a period of three years with an option to renew for two additional one-year terms. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have and approve these recommended items.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Thomas this morning?
Commissioner O'Donnell. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to talk a little bit about item number one, the pedestrian bridge down in Hayesville. That's an issue that Public Works has been working on for, how many years, David?
Probably at least five.
At least five. It was a big issue for Commissioner Norton, a big issue for me. One of the details that I want to talk about that is I know the WAMPO staff, we're only here because of their efforts, and you might mention a little bit about that when I'm done, Mr. Chairman, but what's so exciting about this is that the city of Hayesville, so we're paying 20% of the project, and then the city of Hayesville is paying 20% of our 20%, so they're coming in at roughly $137,000 out of our 685.
Eighty-five.
Six eighty-five. So it's, talk about a great partnership. You have the county, you have the city of Hayesville, and federal government and state all working together on it. It'll be spectacular when it gets done. So I just, staff, I know David and Jim Weber had worked on that with me for the last year, but wouldn't have happened without WAMPO's last-minute maneuvering.
I'll just mention the federal participation is over $2.7 million.
Yeah. It's fantastic.
And this happened because at the end of the year, WAMPO did have the funds that were available, and this project was ready to go. So as a result of that, why, we were able to use those funds to fund this bridge.
Yeah, but big thank you to the city of Hayesville for stepping up and taking 20% of that portion, because that is a substantial amount of money. So it's fun watching everybody work together on a project this important.
Commissioner Renza.
Well, I just have to say, a lot of people are working on this, but really, this is a pedestrian bridge that costs like $3 million, and I think a lot of people in WAMPO really think this is an example of government using a lot of money on a project that probably shouldn't have been this much money spent on it. So it's really not necessarily, it's a lot of people working together, but it's not necessarily example of cost-effective government, because there's a lot of roads and other bridges that could have been done that would have been more important, but nevertheless, that's where we're at, because you've got to vote yes on everything, right?
Commissioner O'Donnell. I would just like to mention, this is a safety issue for kids going to Ruth Clark Elementary, to campus high school. They're crossing a very narrow bridge that was built 40 years ago, David, is that correct?
That's about right, yes.
Yeah, so it's not just about spending money on a pedestrian bridge, it is truly about safety, and Public Works and others can fill you in on that, too.
Yeah, safety. How many people are there crossing that bridge, pedestrian?
Well, there's nowhere for them.
You don't even know.
Well, there isn't a pedestrian bridge, sir.
That's right.
We're voting on.
That's right.
And people can't cross it now because there's no shoulder to walk on.
It's much more cost-effective to incorporate the pedestrian bridge when you build the bridge to begin with or have to redo it later on, that's the point.
And we're a long way out from that.
Hey, further discussion? Do we have a motion?
Oh.
Well, I move to we approve Board of Bits and Contracts.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Renza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Consent Agenda.
Commissioners, Mike Scholes, County Manager, recommend you approve consent agenda items Quebec through Alpha Foxtrot.
Move to approve Quebec through Alpha Foxtrot. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call or roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Aye.
Commissioner Renza.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Unruh.
Aye.
Chairman Dennis.
Aye. Next item, please.
Legislative Issues.
And Will Dear, do we have anything for legislative issues today?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Will Dear, Assistant County Counselor. At the staff meeting yesterday, we kind of went over the preliminary legislative agenda, and we'll have another draft of that prepared soon with the updates and feedback we received during that meeting.
Right now, we have a tentatively scheduled comeback for a staff meeting on December 4.
On which day?
December 4.
December 4. Okay, any questions, Will Dear? Seeing none, thanks, sir. Next item, please.
Other.
Do any of the Commissioners have anything to cover during other today? Commissioner O'Donnell.
I just think you had a big anniversary in your life, right? That probably need to mention that.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, big deal.
Last Friday, my wife and I celebrated our 50th wedding anniversary. I appreciate everyone that came for a little card shower and a reception on Saturday. Thank you. Anyone else have anything for other?
Oh, and lastly, our election was so smooth last week. I know we haven't had a public meeting since then, but Tabitha Lehman, as our election Commissioner, did an outstanding job, her staff did great, results were in quickly. The public, we still see races in America that are undecided because counties screwed up, and just watching what's happening down in Florida and in Arizona right now just makes me really appreciate the fact that we have a large urban county that has its election results within hours of closing. And so Tabitha and her staff worked their tails off, and a big effort from county staff as well helping, but that was, it was great. No hiccups, so Tabitha, doubt, standing work.
Very good. Well, I concur on Commissioner Lehman. We actually invited her today to come over and give us an update on how the election went, but she was very busy yet, trying to finish up some things from the election, because we have a vote canvas coming up in the morning. But I do want to add my kudos that the election went very smoothly, I thought, and I appreciate that. Two other things I wanted to talk about. First of all, the USS Wichita Commissioning is going to happen on January the 12th, down outside of Jacksonville at Mayport. Everyone's invited, you can go on to the USSWichita.org, and you need tickets to be able to get in, and there's a place to sign up to get those if anyone wants to go down there. They're going to have to pay their own way to get down there and back, but everyone's invited. The project actually, the commissioning actually will start on the Wednesday before that, Saturday of the 12th, with dinner that evening, and the last chance that you'll be able to get on the ship until they close it down for a few days. There are events then on Thursday and Friday, and then the commissioning is on Saturday morning, the 12th, so all the public is invited down to see the USS Wichita to be commissioned. One other thing that I wanted to talk about, last night, Manager Scholes and I had an opportunity to go to KPTS Veterans Coming Home Celebration, and it was the fourth year that they had the celebration. Those of you that know Hutch and Patty, we're both recognized last night for their contributions to veterans. A Marine that was at Toshon Reservoir was recognized last night, and I think he said there was six, how many, 60-some are all that's left of the chosen few?
There's about 1,100, but there were 65 at their reunion, DC.
So they are true heroes, and they also recognize the First Sergeant from the Army for his service and his continued service that we have, that he's providing to our veterans today. So I appreciate that. One other thing that happened last night is a teacher from Dodge Elementary came by and gave me this little piece of paper, and it says, "Dear veteran, I salute you. Thank you for protecting America. You are very brave. You kept us safe. You are a hero to me," and it signed Betsy. So I just wanted to thank Betsy from Dodge Elementary for providing that to me, and I will put that in my office. With that, Commissioner Unruh, do you have any motions?
I have two motions for executive session, according to protocol by the County Counselor's Office. They are ones for 30 minutes and others for an hour and a half, and I didn't know, Mr. Chairman, at 12:25, if you want to make any provision for a break, or how we should just go ahead and make the motions, Madam Counselor.
Well, before we start the motion, I guess my question is, it is now going on 12:30, and the motions are going to take two hours. Do we want to take a little bit longer break and grab a sandwich downstairs or anything like that, or does the Commission want to go two hours before we?
Well, we can go into recess, reconvene, and then make the motions when we get back, if that's your desire. I'm asking a question.
That's what I want to know from the Commission, is would you all like to take a short recess and grab a sandwich real quick, because it's going to be two hours?
Yeah.
Okay. What I'd like to do then is we'll go into recess until 1 o'clock, is that agreeable to everyone? We'll come back out of recess and we'll make the motions at that time. But with that, we are recessed until 1 o'clock, we'll be back in the room at 1 o'clock. Thank you.